Thank you. I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Scioto Township Board of Trustees to order. The time is 7:03. We'll call the roll and have the Pledge of Allegiance. Please call the roll.
Hathaway?
President.
Palmer?
President.
Flintoff, present.
Brizel?
Present.
Carey?
Present.
Noel?
Present.
Reiser?
Present.
All here.
Thank you. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the land of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, before we move to adoption of the agenda, the Treasurer, Treasurer Palmer, is asked to make a brief statement.
I ask Will for this moment in time to, right up front before the meeting, address a conversation that we've had this week about ACH, Option for Payments of Taxes and Utilities. First though, over the last few days, there have been emails circulating where the author is still claiming that my office lost tax checks last year. Let me reiterate one more time. There was never any lost checks, cash, or any other payments. That checks being referred to were found in the possession of our bank and had been there all along. Yesterday morning, I was considering putting the option for people to pay their tax and utility bill via ACH, otherwise known as auto pay on hold. Then yesterday afternoon, an older woman came to the counter requesting a form. She stated she was very excited to sign up because the only two checks she had to write each year were for her summer and winter bill. She also stated her neighbors were excited too. In the past three days since tax bills hit the mailboxes and it had the notice in there, information notice only, we have received dozens of calls, emails, and people at the counter wanting to know where the form is as they could not find it on the website. They expressed great excitement that we are finally offering this service, which is free to all, not only them, but to the township. No charge. We had a couple of people ask if this was mandatory and were quickly assured that it was not. It is the option offered to citizens. It is not mandatory. Several seniors have told me how excited they are about this option because it relieves their worry that they may forget costing them interest and penalty. Some of us forget, put it away, and then forget what time of year it is. They also go out of town in the winter. Younger residents are equally on board with the program because they lead very busy lives and can also forget. As I have indicated, the option for direct ACH payment has not only been discussed throughout the years, but has been requested by many of our residents. I have checked with other Treasurers in the county and many of them offer the same service and they too require a form filled out with an authorizing signature. We have spent considerable time researching the safety and cost effectiveness of this option for our residents. We have spoken with our software representative at BSNA, inquiring if they have an option for people to enter their own banking information directly into the software. The answer is no. It was an emphatic no. They stated every municipality uses this option. That who uses the option requires the resident fill out a form and submit it for entry. I have spoken with several other municipalities in the county who use it. They have all had overwhelming positive response and have a large percentage of their residents taking advantage of this free service. I once again feel the need to address the concern about the information we are requesting so we can fulfill this option. It is the exact same information on each and every check that comes through our doors. This is actually a much safer option because the banking information is only being provided once instead of each time a check is put in the mail. As we know, the more hands that touch a check, mail carriers, sorters, whoever, the more opportunity for someone to steal that information. Not to mention thieves stealing out of mailbox. ACH relieves all of that risk. We in Treasury only wanted to offer this service as an additional convenience to our residents. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Well, that brings us to adoption of the agenda. I have one small change that I would like to announce. The item I1, which is the public hearing, has a model motion and it's labeled as an optional action item. And in fact, we won't be taking action on that. It will just be a public hearing. So discussion, presentation and discussion only. Are there any other suggestions for changes to the agenda?
I have a suggestion. I would like to move to add a discussion of the proposed electronic bill payments procedure for tax and utility bills to the top of new business. Remember, under our rules of order, board members retain the right to amend the agenda at any board meeting.
Of course.
Support.
So we have a motion by Noel, support by Flintoff to add an item to new business. Presumably that would, by top of new business, you mean ahead of the item that's already on new business?
Correct.
So K1?
Just wait, you're not there yet, sorry.
Well, I've learned that for convenience sake, it's best not to relabel things.
We'll just call it new.
So we'll give it a label, but we can't give it the same label as something else. That would be confusing.
K0?
K0. That works for me.
Okay, so it's going above.
Well, if we approve that, a change to the agenda. Are there any other suggested changes to the agenda?
Yes. I have a question about, well, there's a consent agenda item for the daycare. I have questions about conditional land use. So is Doug the one?
I'll get him in a minute.
Well, okay, so as long as somebody is here to answer questions, then.
Do you want to take that on?
Yeah, pull it.
So you'd like to move that from the consent agenda. That would move it to new business.
Sure.
I'm the person who's got applications, so I can answer questions as well possibly.
Oh, great.
Thank you. So where would you like to put that one?
Well, that will go under new business. It will retain its current label for organizational sanity.
So we're gonna.
So that would be G3 would be moved from the consent agenda to new business.
You want to place it second since we have somebody here?
Well, we probably have people here for K1 too. In fact, I was going to suggest or ask if it would be okay to move the discussion item to the third item so that we don't keep people waiting while we discuss. It could be a lengthy discussion, especially if there's a lot of unanswered questions after we discuss it and then report.
I'm okay with it. Are you okay with it?
I'd just be concerned that we might get to 11 o'clock and not have a majority.
As long as we understand that we're going to get to this issue tonight.
I will personally say that I would support going, if we got to that point where we got to 11 o'clock. I don't anticipate that. It's not that long of an agenda.
Well, could we, the daycare, since we have somebody here, but it's just some questions to clarify the process for me. But could we have her back first so she doesn't have to sit through the other two?
Sure. Mine's one in front of hers, well.
Yeah, because hers is going to be really long.
I mean, I think there may be people who are interested in K1 as well. We always wind up making someone wait.
K1 is not going to be.
About K1, G3, K0?
That's what I was going to suggest, if that's okay with you.
So say it again.
So it'll be K1 as it is, G3, the item moved from the consent agenda, and then K0, the new.
Yeah.
Okay.
And at some point, I'll reformat away from letters.
If everyone supports adding that item to the agenda.
Yeah.
K2 at this point, but whatever, I'll leave it as a.
You don't know the chaos that creates, John.
Okay, so with those changes, unless there are any others, are we ready to approve the agenda? Okay, all those in favor of approving the agenda as modified, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Right, the agenda is approved.
And Will, I'm sorry, who made the motion to approve the agenda as modified? Can we just say?
I move it if it wasn't already moved.
Yeah, that I'll support.
Okay, how about Reiser, Flintoff?
Thank you.
Voice vote. Thanks. Okay, communications to the Board of Trustees.
Yeah, they're all in the packet. I did update it. As of this morning, OneNote, adjacent owner's response to proposed Goodrich PUD amendment relates to our public hearing.
The next item is public comment. This is a time for members of the public to speak for up to three minutes on any manner under the purview of the Board of Trustees. If you are here to speak for the public hearing later in the meeting, we ask that you wait until we get to that item on the agenda. But we usually take those who are here in the hall first and then we turn to those who are participating remotely. Trustee Reiser or Brizel willing to serve as timekeeper? Thank you. So who's first to speak during public comment? Please come on up, have a seat.
Big Spicer, South Township President. I said the trustees, an email here a few days ago, whatever, just want to make sure everybody did receive that. And that it's amazing that really nobody even had really a copy of the Boulevard. Sort of amazing that cannot have a copy of that available here that night and pass that without having that copy even available for people to look at or anything. But you know, there's a lady up here, remember, and thank you so much, Kristy, for getting that for Eugene, Kathy, and me. I appreciate that, your time doing that. And also, my other question is, is this whole time even during the planning commission to the trustees that are supposed to be ongoing negotiations between the developer and the property owners of the south of Boulevard. But it seems like even the planning commission and the trustees, they don't get with the developer, whatever, to try to make sure we get anything done. So you've already went ahead and passed this thing or whatever, and now still we're in the same position again, where we have to get some kind of negotiation with the developer and us. So who is going to be the person responsible for getting us together and get something going on? Because you guys haven't done anything. So who's going to be responsible for doing this? Because you've already passed it somehow. So the only good thing I can say is, is maybe we'll never ever get it passed and this thing won't ever go through. Does that sound, that could happen? Yes or no?
So we did see your questions and I did forward those on to Doug. I believe Doug did respond in detail.
Yeah.
To all those questions, just so you know. And we can forward that response, I think today.
He has that.
I got it too, but I'm just saying though, is even though the person that's going to be responsible is going to be the lawyer from the planning commission, is that correct?
No, no. No, there's a problem inherent in this and that is that the township is not involved in these negotiations. This is between you and the developer, you and your neighbor and the.
Who's overseeing it though?
It's not the township's negotiation. It's between you and the developer. It's not.
So if we never come up with nothing, then this thing is not going to pass that. You can't, they can't develop it because that's one of the contingencies.
The contingency that you're referring to is that a condition that was placed on it, that there be good faith negotiations.
Right.
And good faith negotiations mean that the two parties come together, each with an openness to reaching an agreement. It doesn't mean that they have to reach an agreement. It just means that they come together and negotiate, each of them.
Who's going to oversee that?
It's not an overseen process. I mean, unless you choose together with the other party to find a mediator or someone to oversee the negotiations, it's just a negotiation between you and your attorney and the developer and.
So how can this go forward then?
That's how it goes forward. It's a negotiation.
I understand that, but what if both sides can't come together like a contract?
Sometimes that happens in a negotiation, that sides can't reach agreement. It doesn't mean that it's not a good faith negotiation.
Mr. Spicer, I'm not going to venture to answer your very good question, but I just want to state that I do think he has a fair question for the township that when a condition that is placed is that there be good faith negotiations, what does it mean if one or both sides state that there are not good faith negotiations?
So will we get our attorney to respond to that question?
And I don't know what the answer to that is, but is that a fair representation of your question?
Yeah, all I want to say is Dan Johnson and Alan Green aren't doing anything. Our lawyers already went to them and you've heard us spill a hundred times in here. They ain't doing anything. Excuse my language, they're not doing anything.
There's other contingencies in there. Who's overseeing all of their, I think there's eight or nine or 10. Who at the township is at the planning?
Let's get legal counsel to respond to that. That's not our.
That was just a valid question. I didn't say solve it. I just want to know.
And I was just going to follow up for Dave. Maybe it helps with Heritage. I'm Kathy Spicer.
Thank you for providing your name for the record.
Kathy Spicer.
Good to see you, Kathy.
So these conditions, again, we're not very schooled and I know we're not going to talk about it a whole lot tonight, but because it was under communications and I was trying to learn how the meetings go, we wanted to comment with his email. I have them all listed here from November of '22, January, these are agendas. And then we hit attachments, if that's the right term, because I don't own a computer. March of '23, all these attachments, for example, January, just the language so you know and then you can hear you on and help us out. We need your help. Page three of HWCWA review, approval is based on the following conditions. They are listed one through eight on page eight. Number eight states good faith negotiations continue. And then in May, it's also the same, pretty much the same wording, number eight lists based on conditions. Negotiations are to continue. It's number eight of eight conditions that the PUD was passed, kind of as written. So that's what we're going by and we're just asking for any help that we can get from you folks to help us residents for again, who can enforce these conditions. One of them's a bunch of money that goes to utilities or fire department or whatever it is. I mean, there's a lot of important ones that you guys are interested in. That's why you probably passed some of this. So anyhow, that's where we stand. Okay? Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Eugene Kett, Scioto Township President. Mrs. Palmer, I was glad to hear that that's all straightened out with the bank. I sat in different meetings when they were looking for your head. I knew you're too good of a person to have done these things that they were, you know, basically pointing the finger at and said, well, you took our $700,000, $800,000. So I'm glad that's all worked out. I also live south of the Boulevard of Heritage Woods and have the same concerns. So Will, maybe you can answer this. I guess you kind of did a minute ago. So each time this thing goes through a stage, so it goes through the preliminary approval at the planning commission and it's direct right there. It says contingent on a Boulevard agreement being worked out. Maybe I miss, maybe I don't understand the terminology and it says good faith negotiations, but you would think that listed in the same things that like Kathy had mentioned, $155,000 is supposed to be donated to the fire department. Are you going to just look at that too and, you know, if that doesn't happen, say, well, it was up to them to work it out. It's not our responsibility as board members or the supervisor to make sure this happens. So it seems like it's a bit of a two-edged sword there if you guys aren't trying to help us out, but it's listed as a contingency on this approval.
So there's a difference between some of the items that you're describing. The negotiation between you and your neighbor and the developer is about potential sale of land that is, would be an exchange between, directly between you and the developer. The other item that you've, well, you're not selling land, you're not negotiating over selling land?
Correct. No, we're being forced to use a Boulevard, being forced to use somebody else's private property to enter our homes. That's the problem. The other problem is in future, and I've pointed this out, I read the terms of the decree in this meeting, recited those, gives all the, every bit of authority to the developer as to what goes on our property. With maintenance agreements, usage agreements, it's at third discretion is the exact word. And this is what you passed also.
Well, I'm a little confused by what you're listing as the different conditions, but the one that you listed and actually Kathy, the one that you mentioned too, the community benefits from the PUD are part of the development agreement between the township and the developer. So that is an agreement and there is a contract that's enforceable. But the negotiations that are referred to, the good faith negotiations are between the two of you and the developer. The township is not involved in those negotiations. And the conditions in terms of the design of the intersection and so on were dictated by the Michigan Department of Transportation. So the township was not involved in that. And in fact, that wasn't something that the developer really could negotiate with you.
The first third of the intersection, it goes 20 feet onto the private park. That was negotiated, that was dictated by MDOT, as you mentioned. MDOT also stated that they wouldn't issue a permit unless the Boulevard agreement, agreement, usage agreement, maintenance agreement, easement was approved, signed, and agreed with the neighbors, which it was not. And since the developer was slick enough to go to the Attorney General's office and have MDOT change their mind, we're stuck with this.
I hear what you're saying, but again, the township is not involved in that, that particular decision. It's an MDOT state level decision and it's outside of the township's authority.
One third of it was. The other two thirds that dictate commercial access to our property was, if I was the developer, I'd make it as one-sided as humanly possible too. But who takes care of us? Who looks after us getting skinned on this? I mean, we're being directly taken advantage of and this approval has allowed it to happen.
Well, I understand the concern that you've expressed. I know you've come, both of you and the Spicers have come before and talked with us. Our advice from our township attorney is that the negotiation is between you and the Spicers and the developer. You do have an attorney, I know, because Mr. Lucas has been here as well.
He's cost us thousands of dollars and we were up against a brick wall trying to negotiate, have good faith negotiations with this guy. It's taken, he hasn't responded in the last seven weeks since the last approval. We're still concerned about when this is going to happen.
Go ahead and reach out to him. CC me. If they don't negotiate and get back to you, I'll personally engage with Dan and poke them with.
And I appreciate the offer. I wanted to speak with you about your appraisal on the property. I had some other stuff that popped up you might have some interest in. Probably now is not the time, but we ought to have lunch sometime. You'd appreciate some of the stuff I had to share with you.
I'll just put the bill.
You know, you're all right, man. Appreciate it. Everybody have a good evening.
Thank you. Thank you. So why would we include that contingency if the township isn't going to oversee it? Why not just leave it out between, you know, it just seems like it was something to appease the residents? You know, why would that be listed?
There's a good discussion there. I don't know that this is the best time to have it. Please, let's proceed with public comment.
Hey, everybody. Brian Abel for the record. Thank you Treasurer Palmer for the update on the automatic payment program. There's one idea that came to mind immediately. We already use invoice cloud. They're already agreeing with BSNA. I don't know if there's, at least from looking at how to pay the bill now, there does seem to be some sort of automatic payment feature that they offer. I fully admit I'm not 100% familiar with how the backend system of that works, but it does look like they, you know, have experience in this, you know, how all the compliance work works. Also PCI comply because they take credit cards for us for payments already. So just an idea for the future. Kenton Township also takes payments online where taxpayers or ratepayers are able to enter their information through the BSNA system. Says maybe something else to look at. Just sort of touch on what, a little bit, because I've gone through this experience. What Mr. Spicer just said. And for people that haven't been through this experience, there are different types of contingencies. For example, if you need an Eagle permit or a wetland permit or a super permit, OHM makes you have those or basically have the approvals in hand waiting on the permit number before you can go to this pre-construction meeting. Now, they can't, OHM is not God. None of us are. We can't force anybody to sign anything and hold them hostage over it. But it's a good question of how you as the township can make sure that somebody's at least trying to bargain at good faith. I don't know the answer to that either in full reality, but it's a good question. Please can you have Carlisle Workman or whomever we're going to have work on it, work with folks for Arbush Groves. I'm sure they'll speak in a few minutes. It's just continuing to drag out. Another question I've heard from some people, Steve Wiegowski retiring? I don't know if that's actually correct, but.
Yes, he's announced that.
Just curious where planning on hiring a replacement for that position is then. And also just another reminder about water rates. They're still coming up, but just something that was on my list. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, Brian.
My name's Eva Berglands. I'm a Scioto Township president. I came in today because I was excited about the payment program and to fill out the application. And I was told there was a meeting tonight because some people were having an issue with it. I'm thrilled for multiple reasons. A lot of them were already addressed. I mean, there's so many benefits to all this for a lot of people and because it's optional, people don't have to do it. I just wanted to vote my support that I'm here with my paper. Yeah, it's, I'm not very tech savvy, but there are things that online banking, paying for these things that I'm forgetting. It's hard to keep as we get older. The younger people, they just do it. It's automatic. I mean, it's a part of their lives. I think it's us older people usually that have a hard time getting on board with it, but I see the advantages. Anyways, I don't have much to say except please vote it in. It's all I can say.
Let me codify some of that too, that I don't think anybody is opposed to the processes, the concept itself. I think everyone's for that, myself included, right? It was the procedures that, one question is, are we securing the data well enough, right? Are we protecting your data, your financial data to the level of degree that is necessary in today's world? That's where the question.
And that's fine. There's never 100%. Everybody is vulnerable, no matter what method of payment you use.
I'm in security IT, so I probably have a real.
And I should talk to you. Somebody's ready to pick.
So, yeah, so I probably, I see all the nasty things that happen in the world, so.
Okay. Well, it just, sometimes it seems like one or two squeaky wheels seem to control things when you go, wait a minute, what happened to the majority? So anyways, I just came to voice my opinion on that.
Thank you, Eva.
Okay. Thank you.
Who's next for public comment?
Good evening. Alan Bravano, representing Low Density Barkwood. I did submit an email a few days ago. It should be in the packet. I'm just going to kind of briefly recite that. It said, dear CYO trustees, at the risk of being redundant for my last B O T missive on June 12th, I am writing to emphasize an important requirement. The need for an authoritative representative voice on the Arbust Grove project. One that is consistent with, with Parkwood's bylaws. I have been a Parkwood resident for almost 26 years. During that time, we have had at least four governing boards, each composed of different generously serving residents who held our bylaws sacrosanct. Derived from a longstanding model of condo associations before us, we have followed those rules explicitly. We have not altered nor knowingly deviated from them. In short, the bylaws have served us well. Those association bylaws require a 67% co-owner and mortgagee approval vote before any easement, stormwater in this case, can, can come onto Parkwood property. The Parkwood H O A does not feel the need to conduct such a co-owner vote. Our group feels that such a reasoned vote is a powerful democratic mechanism meant to protect the whole of Parkwood. The bylaws clause strongly speaks for itself and I once again share that verbiage with trustees below, which is in your packet. I won't recite the clause. For a simple request, as basis for the authority associated with this project, please use all possible CYO Board of Trustees influence to facilitate compliance with our bylaws. Respectfully, Alan Bravano. Thank you for your time.
Steve De Brueller, Parkwood, condo is also low density like Alan. It's capital B also, by the way, uh, first time caller here, by the way. Thank you. Thank you. Big deal. Big deal. Um, yeah, Arbs Grove, uh, 35 units, um, on such a, you know, small piece of property we're there. I think, um, as you've already heard, I think many, many times before, just here to try to encourage at the very least a reduction, uh, in 35 units. It would change, uh, the face of everything that we look at out there. I'm not going to kid you, 12 years ago, when my wife and I moved here, um, the, the woods that we look at out there. That, that was a big, big part of the draw. I mean, falls in Ann Arbor, right? I mean, alls we got, we don't have to go anywhere to see it. We just look at our, you know, our, our back windows. Don't want to lose that. Uh, we don't want to lose, um, uh, the way it looks. We don't want additional noise. We've already got, you know, the traffic on Z, uh, it just, it just increases. Yeah. Getting out of Park Grove Road now is a, a rather dangerous game of chicken with the good folks from, uh, French Estates. Because we all just have to beat what's coming the other way. They used to be, uh, just on certain times of rush hour out there. But even that part has gotten worse and 35 units, uh, we, we just obviously, uh, complicate that and, and make it even more dangerous than it already is. Uh, and then, and then lastly, um, I think it was a year ago, at this time, actually, I was over at the, uh, I read, uh, Arbs Grove, or I'm sorry, um, Arbor Point Community and, um, a lady over there stopped me. And for the past year, I could not, um, I can't say this any better than the way she said it to me. She was very involved. I, I don't even know who it was. She's been very involved for the last year and a half with this. She said to me, and this is a quote, because again, I can't, I can't improve on this. That property over there is a swamp and it should stay a swamp. Folks, I thank you for the opportunity to address everybody here tonight. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Couple things. Alan, you know, as you know, there's no action in front of the board right now, I think on your, on your property. So we hear you loud and clear. I've actually walked your property. I'm familiar with the, where you go up the swamp. I'm familiar with that parcel of land.
Yeah.
I spent about 20 minutes out there. I think other members have as well.
Yeah.
So we're well aware of the conditions there, but again, there is, right now, there's nothing, I don't believe, there's nothing for us to make a decision on.
No, no, understood. Just trying to reinforce. Yeah, understood. Just trying to reinforce. Understood. Yeah.
Who's next?
Good evening, everybody. Um, I'm just here to introduce myself. I'm Alicia Dyer and I'm running for sheriff in Washtenaw County. I'm also now a CYO resident. And I actually patrolled CYO Township during my years working at the sheriff's office for a little bit. And then I spent the majority of my time in Ipsilani Township. Grew up in Ipsilani. I graduated from University of Michigan with degrees in social work and public policy. And we launched our campaign last December, so we're doing a listening tour now. So I'm going all across Washtenaw County to hear from people in the community as well as elected officials around what your needs are when it comes to public safety in the sheriff's office. So thank you so much for all that you do and happy to chat with anybody.
Thanks for being here.
Is there anyone else present in the hall who would like to speak during public comment? None. Uh, let's turn to those who are participating remotely.
First person to speak is Jonathan. Following that is Pam Boyd. Go ahead, Jonathan.
Hey Chrissy, thank you. And thank you, Board of Trustees, for listening to your residence. So, uh, Sussami Street taught my generation, Generation X, to be kind and empathetic. And Bugs Bunny taught us that revenge should be hilarious, fast and brutal. So we've grown up with this mis- mixed message and I hope my response, Donna, to your comments earlier are kind and empathetic and not so Bugs Bunny. But you spent your entire time selling the virtues of A C H. We've had others in the community say, yeah, this is a great idea. Having started a company that provided A C H services as well as being certified, D C I certified for credit card transactions, I know a little bit about this topic. There is nothing wrong with A C H. We all love it. We all use it, even old people. Like my relatives and middle aged people like myself and children like my children. We're all used to it. The issue that we had was with the process that was set up around it. The process that was set up around it involved transmitting banking information through email or regular mail. That in itself is a thousand dollar penalty for each occurrence. The F T C, if it is raised enough times, will assess additional fines. The second part of this was, it was being sent to a personal email address. You can't do that. You need to set up account addresses and then different people can access those accounts. Third, this is an extremely expensive process, asking an individual to manually enter that. It's also in violation of the rules that the F T C has set up. So please, we, we want A C H. We don't want to be squeaky wheels, you know, squeaky wheel, data privacy expert, tomato, tomato. But we're being squeaky wheels to protect people's data and their privacy. I want to thank also Mark for coming out to our house and validating the garbage that's along the, the former fence line. For whatever it's worth, it's still there. I also like to thank the planning commission for not stepping in it by declining the dog care, uh, thing over at Myers. All my notes are messy today. All right, that's it, I guess. Always willing to help with any kind of data issues if I can. Thank you, Jonathan.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Thank you, Jonathan. Pam Boyd, go ahead, please.
Thank you. Pam Boyd, a CYO resident. Donna, I think, uh, thank you for your statement, but it, it's lack of communication as well. We had no idea that those checks were found by the bank. Awesome. That's really great. Kathy, trustee Noel, thank you for adding the electronic bill payment into the discussion. I don't think, um, anyone is against automatic bill payment. And, and again, my name is Pam Boyd, a CYO resident, a squeaky wheel. Because my daughter's in labor, my son-in-law was not able to be here tonight, uh, to give his public comments. As it turns out, um, my daughter and son-in-law live at, um, on Baker Road, just north of what is being called the Many Hands, uh, property. And they went to a meeting and spoke, uh, to the people in charge last night. And so the following are public comments from Andrew Feldkamp, a CYO resident. One, 100 people, 67 that can drive is a lot of people to put on Baker Road. Two, having a festival location that the potential to be disruptive to close neighbors. Three, having a public parking lot on the residential side of the natural tree separation seems unnecessary when there are 85 acres to work with. The condos for aging parents are not, and, oops, and, uh, not 24 hour care are also very close to residential neighbors. Four, I'm concerned that they are assuming that everyone is on board, everything is going well. The zoning change won't be an issue and that they are telling potential investors and residents that all of the neighbors are happy they are coming. However, none of the neighbors have been contacted other than the owners of Lotus who stand to profit. Five, the workers are assumed to be coming from other towns to live with the mentally disabled resident, which will not benefit members of the community. Six, the workers are to be provided room and board as a supplement to a lower salary, which potentially indebted them to the, uh, the commune, he calls it a commune, similar to the, to that of a company store. This would end with people feeling like they can never leave if they become unhappy with being there. Being there that could lead to misconduct. Seven, it seems like Lutton is making the community go along with his plans by making the community seem like bad people if we don't allow this for this facility. Eight, the open door sign in policy to allow the public on grounds could lead to even more people and traffic in those areas. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam. Uh, next up is Rob Pattinson. Go ahead, Rob.
Thank you, Christie. And well done running the cameras, Christie. Uh, you do a very smooth job with that, following the conversation. Thank you for that. Manager partner, welcome back and thank you very much for being here. I'm sure I speak for all of us when I say our hearts are with you and we hope everything is feeling a little bit better. Supervisor Hathaway, thank you very much for your supervisor report yesterday at the D D A. It was very informative. It was very candid. Uh, it was thoughtful and it was a surprise. It was 15 and a half minutes of your report and it was then eight and a half minutes of questions and discussion. And it was very thorough and it was fascinating to find out what you've been working on. And if you don't have a supervisor's report for the Board of Trustees tonight, please repeat your report from the D D A last night. That was, or yesterday, that was very well done. Trustee Brazil, thank you very much for your email, uh, after the May 27th, board meeting. You emailed me the next day. Unfortunately, went into my junk mail folder and I only found it on Friday. I forwarded it to the Cat and Spicer families. I sincerely encourage you to go and have lunch with them. It will be a very enlightening experience. It was for me. I made a mistake last week when I said that we have paid Mike Homier and Foster Swift 147,000. Well, the correct number is 147,913 dollars and eight cents. And I would like to highlight that, that issue in two ways. Number one, that's one and a half firefighters and we've been talking for two years that we don't have enough money to hire three firefighters. That's one and a half of them right there. And on the other side of that, one of the reasons we're paying them that money is because of the power grab of 2021. This board could undo, uh, the, the legal problems it's having by undoing the power grab of 2021 very easily. Please take advantage of that and, and put an end to this mess. The Goodrich Theater, uh, speaking of firefighters, we have no business putting firefighters' lives at risk until we have the equipment to make sure they're safe. Goodrich is talking about six stories. That is unsafe for our firefighters and we have treated our firefighters and put them in unsafe conditions for decades. And then lastly, Treasurer Palmer, thank you very much for the information about the finding the checks. We had no idea. I've got two questions for you. Could you tell us, when did you find out the bank found the checks and what bank was that? And, um, I was the one who most recently wrote in an email about the lost checks because I had no idea that you'd found them. So thank you very much for clearing that up. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak in public comment? I don't see anyone raised at this time.
All right, then let's move on. We have draft minutes for the regular meeting, June 27th. Uh, to approve, are there any corrections to the draft minutes as proposed? I don't see any.
I would move their approval.
All right, we have motion by riser, support by Noel, who approved the minutes as presented. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Supposed. Minutes are approved. That brings us to the consent agenda. It now, uh, contains three items, uh, G one, G two and G four. Is someone prepared to move the consent agenda?
As amended.
As amended.
So moved?
Moved. Okay. Moved by Flintoff, supported by Carrie. All those in, wait, I'm sorry, we have to have a roll call because it.
I know we have the library folks, could you stand up so we can, uh, say hello to our, thanks for coming.
We love the library. Thank you.
Seeing as fun. And I'm content, so. Thanks for your, getting your presentation ready. I'm sorry you didn't get to use it. No problem.
You're, you're probably feeling that's okay. All right, um, with that, um, recognition, uh, we need a roll call.
Okay, uh, per our rules of order, starting with Noel tonight. Noel? Yes. Riser?
Yes.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer? Yes. Flintoff? Yes. Brazil?
Yes.
Carrie? Yes. Consent agenda adopted, seven zero.
That brings us to reports. And the first report, I believe, is the utility report. I don't think we have one. Um, I think there was miscommunication. In any case, uh, we'll, we'll get that for a subsequent meeting. Um, but that brings us to regular reports. Um, there are a number of them, um, that were submitted in writing. I know, uh, one of them, uh, was the, uh, report from the treasurer and there's a lot of interest in that. It was in the form of questions and answers and I think, um, there's an update.
Will we do that one last?
Yeah. Or in the discussion item?
Well, I guess that's up to the board. Would you rather do it as a discussion item later and do it forego the discussion now? Okay.
Yeah.
In that case, um, we'll do so.
Will?
Yeah.
Can I give an update on another topic, another report? Or do you want to go in order?
Um, it doesn't matter. Sure. Go right ahead.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. Well, I didn't mean to. Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, Will, I didn't mean to go before you. Go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Okay. Apologies for the, I'll submit a written clerk's report, lots of updates by the end of this week. The annexation reps, I just added that in there and included, just for the record, the application that was long ago submitted to the city of Dexter by Dave Lutton. As a reminder, the board appointed Riser, Noel, and me as the reps. The very first meeting with the city council from Dexter is this Friday. So this will be our first meeting regarding that, to start to understand anybody's interest in any of this. I will note Pam Boyd's public comments from her son-in-law was tangentially related to this. The Many Hands proposal, just to clarify for you, Mark. Yeah, the Many Hands proposal is something that may or may not separately come to our planning commission. Nothing's been submitted. And the open space proposal application has been submitted to the LPC. So those are three actions requested by Dave Lutton, all about the same Sloan Kingsley property. Is that fair?
Yeah.
Is that, is that it? Okay. Kristi Noel, do you want to make an oral report on that element?
She's trying to pull everything together here. I will submit a written report later this week or next week. I have it handwritten, but I just have it, I have to revise it a little bit. So this is going to be a fairly lengthy report, and I'm going to paraphrase a bit here and shorten it up. As all of you know, the city of Ann Arbor, Asio Township, Washtenaw County, and the Huron River Watership Council joined in the ongoing Galman litigation as intervenors in 2017. Judge Connors was circuit court judge assigned to the case, and he allowed the intervenors to join the case because he believed that the collective wisdom of the various parties would be valuable in achieving a new consent judgment. The new consent judgment was appropriate because the state of Michigan had lowered the drinking water standard for dioxane down to 7.2 hertz per billion. And this new number needed to be reflected in the current consent judgment. There were a series of negotiations and conferences that were held over the next several years. Eventually, Judge Connors issued a cleanup order based on the negotiated fourth amended consent judgment in June of 2021. Now, this fourth amended consent judgment, as most of you know, had been rejected by all of the parties who had negotiated in it, all of the interveners, I should say, not all the parties. There was an appeal to the Court of Appeals, and the Court of Appeals vacated the order of Judge Connors, sent it back down to the circuit court. It stated that the intervenors must file complaints if they wish to remain in the case. Eagle and Galman eventually started negotiations on a new draft fourth consent judgment without the four intervenors. Essentially, we were not invited to participate in any of the settlement discussions from that point on. They eventually reached an agreement out of draft consent judgment. Judge Connors entered an order requiring the intervenors to file their complaints by June 30th, 2023, or be dismissed from the case. And file complaints if they wanted to remain as parties in the ongoing litigation. So Asio Township and the other intervenors had entered the Galman case in order to contribute, hopefully, to the most protective consent judgment that could be negotiated, given the lower drinking water standard of 7.2 hertz per billion. Eagle and Galman have negotiated a new consent judgment, and this has been entered by Judge Connors. Asio Township has decided not to file a complaint in order to remain in the case as an intervener. There are several reasons for this. This, as you know, we've discussed as a group, and has been extensively discussed with our attorney, Bill Stapleton. Will and I have been in frequent communication with Bill Stapleton over this. A new consent judgment has been entered by Judge Connors. Asio had entered the case initially because we wanted to have input into the terms of this new draft fourth consent judgment. However, Court of Appeals took that opportunity away from us, this is my opinion. And consequently, Eagle and Galman had reached an agreement that was entered by the judge. There was nothing more that we could do to have input into the case and to try to alter or change anything that was happening. Since it has been entered by Judge Connors, the reason for us to remain no longer exists. If Asio were to file a complaint, we know that we would incur significant potential future legal fees because we know that Galman will be obstructionist at every juncture in the process. So we've been through this before. I mean, we've been through an appeal to the Court of Appeals, an appeal to the Michigan State Supreme Court. It's been a long haul. So, on a positive note, Asio has pursued EPA involvement in the Galman contamination. Representatives from the EPA have recently stated that the agency's investigation of the Galman dioxane plume suggests that it merits placement on the national priorities list. At a recent town hall hosted by Debbie Dingle, the section chief of the EPA's Region 5 stated that the preliminary score indicates that it would be NPL caliber. So we have this coming in the future. This process is underway. It has a ways to go. City of Ann Arbor has also decided not to file a complaint. However, they will enforce a prior settlement agreement with Galman, and they'll be in court doing that. Washtenaw County has filed a complaint. Many of their reasons for remaining in the case involve their regulatory responsibilities. The county has indicated that the intervenors can continue to be involved in a supportive fashion with the county. And there is a cooperative arrangement with our attorney and the attorney for Washtenaw County. So that's basically it. There's going to be a little more in my written report, but that's basically it. Are there any questions? I mean, this shouldn't be news to anybody. Guys, it shouldn't be any questions. Yeah, I guess I could say for the public. I mean, it is news.
I have a question. I was with that meeting. Thank you for the really good report, accurate, detailed. When the EPA says that it's, they want to list it on the, as a super fund site and publish this in the federal register, there's going to be a comment period.
Yes.
Is there going to be a request or an FYI to Asio Township residents and those affected to weigh in on why it should be? Because there's going to be comment from the other side saying that it shouldn't be on the super fund. So at some point, do we need to mobilize people to weigh in when it's published in the federal register? If you need help on that, let me know.
Okay, I will find out. I know that it is anticipated that Galman is going to put up opposition to it.
Right.
And the EPA is already talking about that. So we'll see, but I will find out.
Yeah, what do we need to do to anticipate that? Be ready to
Yeah.
give them our side of the data as well.
The EPA has been in touch with us, with me, on a regular basis. So they have asked for all of our well testing data. I shared it all with them. They have asked for some other data, and everything they've asked for, I have given them.
Let us know what, if you need to call out the troops.
I mean, we're talking, what's our timeline? We're not talking about next week.
No.
Within the next year.
Within the next year.
Yeah. Right, so.
Within the year.
Thanks. Are there further oral reports from others?
Well, I did, Road Advisory Committee, we met in June, and then we were supposed to meet the day after the board, lots of people on vacation. We canceled it, and then we realized we didn't get much for the, the next agenda. But I'm having an issue with the Road Advisory Committee, and also, not that the committee itself, the, the members are great. We're trying to do our best with what we have, but we're a little confused because we're not really sure what to do. So I'm, I'm getting feedback from different areas, different committees and whatnot. And I'm finding that Asio is kind of disjointed with our committees. And, you know, everybody's doing their own thing, and some of the things that other committees do overlaps into other committees. And I am suggesting we really need to do something so we can really leverage our time and energy. So I want to suggest that the board have a working session so we can figure out what we need to do as a, as a board and start working together. And Donna, I'm sorry for everything that you went through this past week, but we were all affected. And I think that if we would have had a working session and that was brought to the board, we could have worked it out and implemented your idea. And that's just one.
It really wasn't bad. People were good.
Yeah, oh, great. So thank you, but this is just an example that if we're, if we're working together, and, you know, we're all doing our best, we make mistakes, but, and I think it's unfair that we're being held accountable for it in some mean ways. But anyway, another idea was for the board to come together as in a work session, but also have the chairs of the committees come together and work together and also work with the board. So we can be all on the same page. We can start working together, and we can make Asio more efficient.
Well, I guess I'd like to add, I mean, to me and my mind, that's a good start. I, I do want to take that step further.
Okay.
From my observation of being here, what, nine months? We seem to operate very tactically, right? Problem, solution, problem. I don't see it like a strategic plan, right? This is, here's what we want to do strategically to all these things. This is what we do in a company, right? You're responsible for this, you're responsible for this, you're responsible for this. Delegate out, right? You do stand-ups. There's a reason I call them stand-ups because everybody gets to stand, everybody gets to sit down. It's more, less talk, more do. And then hold, hold you accountable, you're accountable, me accountable, and we get things done. There is, but there is no, I don't see any strategic plan.
Because we don't come together in a work session, you know, we can't do it through email.
But let's agree to, what are our strategic goals for the year? Like, for example, one of mine would be, and Donna, I'd say, I don't think that's a, I think it was just a symptom, an overall symptom of really, Asio generally, what is our strategy for securing all data, for example, right? It's, it's not just Donna's stuff. I'm going to argue it's all the files down in the cabin. What about all the other data that we have? What, what are the protections in place that we have to this? How about getting data? We've talked about pushing up to SharePoint sites so customers can, our residents, sorry, that's a habit from being in business, our residents can, can readily access it and we feel transparent. No, this stuff is hard, right? And I'm only taking, Mike, you're happy thinking what falls in my purview, right? I'm, I'm good at, if I'm not good at it, you don't want me doing it, right? You're good at certain things, and it's, we have two attorneys here as well, and Joyce, of course, has done this forever and probably keeps us all in. So I would propose that I'd like to start at the very high level, the highest level. Strategically, what do we want to do over the next, pick a time, 12 months? If we can, we don't think we can see farther than that horizon, 18 months? And then, from there, a tactical plan is developed, and we're, with have accountability, goals, measurements, time.
Can I just chime in as a, as a way to kind of move this word? I mean, one, I star both of what you're saying. I mean, this has been a chronic problem in Asio Township. We have acknowledged it. We had Administrator Rowley, you know, you know, give us a lot of input on this. You know, I've noticed this, a lot of people who come to this organization have noticed, you know, we did our very first capital plan in, you know, 2020. You know, was our very first township capital plan. Our budget process, we've had a narrative, I think, two, two times in it. So even the most basic planning documents, much less the, the strategy planning. So we've done a lot of good things, you know, here and there, but I would defer to Joyce, and, you know, let's, let's give her some time to, to bring, bring forth how we should be doing this.
And actually, I had a conversation last week with trustee Knowles about the need to really stop and look at priorities and come together to develop a plan related to the township. You know, I think, to a great extent, what I've seen is more reactionary instead of being proactive. And I think we could certainly be a much better organization if something like that took place. So I would welcome an opportunity to work on that.
Thank you.
Yeah, we have the administrative part of it, and then we have the committee part of it. We need to bridge those together somehow. And it's just, I think Asio could just be really spectacular.
So Joyce, is that something we can ask you to?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Joyce, I know we talked, I, I don't know if you wanted to go further at this point, but without your report items from your, you as the manager.
Oh, well, I, I think just in terms of a couple of items that I plan to work on and possibly might need to bring in action to the board as one related to the ordinance officer position, given that we're no longer going to be able to use our planning agency for that purpose. And what I plan to actually, you know, whether we might be better served with full-time person versus part-time person, and evaluate what we've paid in the past for that service and bring back a recommendation probably for your meeting on the 25th.
Great.
And then on the utility director position with Steve planning to leave in September, I plan to get that position advertised within the next two weeks.
Thank you, Joyce.
I just want to add a quick report for the city of Ann Arbor Technical Advisory Committee on the wellhead protection area and water intake protection in the Huron River. We had a presentation yesterday from the Washtenaw County person who has had emergency preparedness and emergency responses in Washtenaw County. I believe he's a fire, fire chief. And we, the focus was on chemical spills and anything that could potentially impact the Huron River, basically. So I know at one point, John, you had asked me, we talked about this issue of trains carrying volatile cargo and tipping over. And you had said, oh, do we know which trains passing through Washtenaw County are carrying volatile hazardous materials? And what he's saying is, we have to assume every train
Yeah.
is carrying hazardous material. That's the way it's being done now.
That's my understanding, that local jurisdictions never have had No. a say on this.
And this is real new, under Debbie Dingle's heart, too, given what happened in Wayne County recently with the, with the, with the train derailment. And, and, and so that, I know she's tracking it as well. So you'll get support from her with respect to disclosures and whatever they can do on a, on a, on a national level. So you'll get support from her with respect to disclosures and what, whatever they can do on a, on a, on a national level.
Some of the train tracks are right by the Huron River.
Of course, yeah.
That's why I.
Yeah, those are owned, uh, that's infrastructure that's owned by the Michigan Department of Transportation.
Yeah, there was just a good article about this in the Times. Did you see it in the Times?
No.
Okay, I'll share it out with the board.
Okay. Anyway, that was it. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, well, I have a quick report. I, I know, um, Rob Patterson was, um, was praising my report to the, the DDA board, the DDA board met yesterday. Um, and, um, while a lot of what I reported to them was news to them, it would not be news to all of you because it, that I was dealing with a lot of planning matters that have come through the Board of Trustees and trying to summarize for them things that, um, I'm guessing everyone here is familiar with. And it did lead to some discussion because it was news to them and, uh, they were looking at it from the point of view of the DDA board. However, there was a key action I would like to, uh, report on. The DDA board voted to move forward with phase one of kind of a uh, renewal of the landscaping of the median on Jackson Road. This is something that they've had a subcommittee looking at for many months. And they finally came forward with a proposal and so, um, with some conditions that the DDA board sort of placed on that. Um, they're going forward and, and, um, it will serve as sort of a, uh, in, in some ways, you know, the data, the experience of the phase one will inform hopefully phase two, but phase one would, uh, run from Wagner, uh, to just, um, west of Zeke, so with the, the median in front of Meyer. Um, and, um, if the plan is to replace a lot of the existing plantings and to rejuvenate the beds and, so it, um, it also raised a question about maintenance. That's one of the conditions that was placed on this action. Um, and so the DDA also had a discussion about the fact that it's been, while it's been a norm of the DDA to say that it doesn't pay for maintenance, that actually there is no statutory provision on DDA's paying for maintenance. And so you sort of opened up that discussion. And actually, one thing that I wasn't gonna report on, but, um, your comment actually, um, Trustee Carrie prompts me to is there was also a long discussion about the need for the DDA to, um, get together with the Roads Advisory Committee and, uh, talk specifically about roads within the DDA district and, and how to sort of, um, coordinate uh, together, um, so that when there's a, a proposal for road improvements or maintenance, uh, that we are working with the Road Commission with kind of a unified voice, uh, as opposed to sort of figuring it out on the fly, uh, each spring.
Question about the, or follow up on the maintenance? Um, so I'm glad to hear that there's some ideas about the landscaping. Um, a question, does the, and I appreciate that the DDA is taking this on. This is something I think they should pay for. I think number one, they should pay for one hundred percent of the maintenance. So I'm looking forward to hearing that from the DDA, um, cause right now the township is saddled with that. We have, um, not enough money, um, and continuing KBK contracts and all of this. So that would be my number one ask of the DDA is to, number one, maintain. Um, two, um, in terms of any new landscaping, uh, scope question, does that include the signs? Because there's been some debate in the past about the signs, you know, the one by Wagner where we live, the letters are peeling off. Does that, who's, will they take on the signs?
Well, actually, you reminded me there, we, that was an item that was, um, unfortunately, we didn't really get to at that meeting. But it was, uh, something that, um, there is a proposal the DDA is considering as part of this sort of effort to improve the landscaping of, um, replacing signs. And, um, in fact, uh, the question that emerged from that kind of abbreviated discussion at the DDA board was, um, something I already approached, uh, the deputy clerk about, trying to, uh, find out what the, uh, the standards are for the branding for SiO Township's, um, sort of logo or seal or whatever it is.
We don't.
In, in, um, you know, sort of what, uh, how to approach that. And, um, one thing that came up in that conversation as well is that, um, there's a development at the other end of, uh, the district near Baker, um, that Woodhill, uh, not Woodhill, Woodview. Woodview Commons, um, is part of their plan is to put, install a, a new entry sign in that area. So, um, this is a good time for sort of communicating with them and, and sort of getting a standard look to these various, uh, welcome to SiO signs.
And I would ask that the, the board, whenever that conversation gets to the point that, where we decide, you know, do we have a logo? Is it a script? Are we the township of SiO? Are we SiO Township that, you know, they, we have a public discussion and board decision on that?
So I, that's another thing that I, uh, brought up when we were talking about is that every organization I've ever been involved with that ever got into a discussion about logos. It just took a tremendous amount of time and I hope we can do it without getting into a, you know, a big mess. But, um, I knew that the board would want to have input on how those signs looked. So, um, that is something, um, I'll try, we'll try and actually, maybe the, maybe the thing to do is to try and have a proposal that makes its way through the, this board back to the DDA, uh, because they meet, um, only every two months. And so we, uh, we, we maybe could be able to move forward on that more quickly.
Um, one thing, Mark, um, branding, you know, there's people that they specialize in branding and they could create.
Yeah, pro bono, lead us through a process.
They're sort of marketing companies, so yeah.
Yeah, okay, there you go.
Pro bono would be great. Thank you.
Well, I'll do that. Logos are us.
Yeah, we can even put it on the, um, water towel, you know, because it's already done. I think tie dye.
No, no, quite seriously. I mean, the water towel too, so.
Yeah, we, we want. Never done a water tower. That is one thing I've never done.
All right, there's one other thing I wanted to mention. This is not really a report from the DDA at all, but, um, there's a still grass workshop. Um, I don't know if everyone's familiar with still grass, but it's a very, uh, awful invasive species that's, uh, gained a, a, a hold in, in SiO Township, unfortunately. And, um, if, um, you're interested in learning about that, how to mitigate it, uh, what it looks like and so on. Um, it's on July twenty sixth from six to seven thirty. It's being held at the Botsford Preserve. Um, and there's, um, parking, uh, for the event at Forest Cove Office Complex off of Miller Road. And I have a flyer which I'll try and put out on our social media and maybe I can get, uh, Mary's help to put it up on the website. To.
Sorry, what time is it again?
Six to seven thirty on July twenty sixth.
Thank you.
And I personally, um, am very familiar with still grass because it's grown all over around my house, unfortunately, because I'm right next to the Botsford Preserve. All right.
And Will, do you expect that the DDA will, um, deal with the maintenance, funding the maintenance of the Boulevard at their next meeting?
I think that is going to come up at the next meeting. Uh, one of the things that we talked about is the fund from which Boulevard Maintenance is paid um, is, you know, rapidly diminishing.
Correct.
And, um, uh, the source of that money, uh, in that fund, I believe, came from, uh, some of the sale of, um, land along the Boulevard.
It was one-time funding.
Right, and, and there are a few parcels that have been identified that remain. And so one of the comments at the DDA meeting was perhaps we could offer those for sale and then replenish that fund. Um, and that would help. Um, but I think, um, um, the larger question of maintenance is bigger than simply, um, replenishing that fund. So I think, yes, I think we can, um, we could communicate as a board, um, both about the signage and about, uh, maintenance costs, um, and that would help the DDA move forward.
I mean, from my perspective, the number one ask I have of the DDA is to take over one hundred percent of the funding of the maintenance of the Boulevard. I don't know what others think. But that, that's been a drag on our Fund Two, Four, Five and, um, we have no plan for it. We, uh, have trouble managing KDK. There's gonna be another ask coming back to the board soon in dribs and drabs. So I appreciate the DDA's leadership in wanting to maintain the Boulevard and would ask that they start prioritizing DDA funds to maintain and then improve. I, I think it would be unfortunate if, say, the DDA spent money to improve and the township were still paying for the maintenance. Does that make sense?
It does.
Fund Two, Four, Five, the money in there is that Boulevard that sale that occurred.
Yeah.
And that's what that's for.
And the state right away a little bit goes in, yep, but it's insufficient. And so would ask if the DDA could take on one hundred percent of the maintenance as a first priority.
So, um, we'll bring this up with the DDA. I just should, uh, share that, uh, one of the goals of this revitalization replacement of the landscaping is to, um, install stuff that's, uh, low maintenance or no maintenance plantings.
Ground crews.
Yes.
Just gonna add, I, I did meet with, um, the chairperson for the DDA. And, um, I think there's some confusion about whether legally they can do that or not. I assured them that they could, but maybe we should get a legal opinion, uh, in order to.
Yeah.
Resolve that issue. I think that would be helpful.
I think that's a good idea, just to, to put that to bed.
Yeah, because he had a question about it. I didn't get the impression they're not willing to do it. They just need to understand that they can do it without any issue.
Okay. That would be great.
I'll work with you on that.
Okay.
I, part of what prompted that conversation was I had a conversation with township attorney. It was, and it was explained to me that there's no statutory prohibition on DDA.
No, it's just, it's been a practice.
It's just, it was, I think it's got into their.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sort of.
And I appreciate the excitement about, about changing the landscaping, but again, maintenance is my number one priority. And that's the number one, it's, it's a drag on township funds right now and I'd like the DDA to take that over.
Okay. Yes, let's move on to the next agenda item, uh, if we may. Um, that is our public.
Just on the, the Planning Commission, two things that's gonna be coming for, toward us in the future is the, uh, conditional, uh, use permit request. We have the, I, Blank Slate wants to take their creamery where they manufacture things and they want to have a small retail, not a scoop place, but just sell, I know, uh, that's, I know, why not? But they're gonna sell it by the pint, so we can still go there and eat ice cream just in a pint full at a time. But so, uh, that, that's coming down the pike. And also coming to us is the request by the doggy daycare that wanted to put a kennel in the facade of Meyer. Uh, the Planning Commission recommended against it six to five to one. Basically, mostly kind of on sanitation concerns because dogs are gonna come out, they're gonna avoid their bladders, et cetera, and it's gonna be right, right where people walk and push shopping carts through. And they had proposed a grassy area kind of by the gas station as, as, as a sanitation area. And that you'd have to park way out there, use it, and then people are gonna wanna park close to where they are. And so it just, it.
It's gross.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that makes sense.
But it's, 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 that'll be coming, that'll be coming to us for consideration. That's okay.
Um, John. One follow? He doesn't want to answer that.
No, I would, I, I, you were asking Chris Chang, go ahead.
Um, how was, I'm, I'm curious because we implemented the pet waste ordinance in our general code and typically Planning Commission looks at the zoning court code, but we've got that in there and it says that every, you know, pet owner must pick up waste.
Right.
So, so I was just wondering from our process, did the planner consider that law in this analysis? Was that even part of the discussion? Was there even awareness of that ordinance?
That ordinance didn't come up, but how to deal with the waste did. The problem is, I don't think our ordinance requires the mopping up of urine. And that's what's gonna happen there too. And, and it, it, it's both kinds, folks, into a growing store. But, but.
John, I know, I know our ordinance is not sufficient for.
Direct, to answer your question directly, it didn't come up, but, but we were thinking about it in other terms, not in the context.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. And I appreciate your attention to the obvious problem with that plan.
All right, let's move on.
No.
No? Okay, all right, you're resisting the temptation.
Not even having it.
All right. Okay, let's move on to, um, I one, this is the Goodrich Theater PUD OA number two-two-zero-zero-eight. Major amendment to the PUD. And I'll just quickly read the background. It's the Etkin Management LLC on behalf of Jackson Road Cinemas LLC requests a major amendment to the approved Goodrich Theater PUD. Their request is to allow a variety of land uses in the place of the existing theater building. The details of the requested land use options are provided in the memorandum, the Planning Commission meeting minutes. Because the applicant requested a major amendment to the planned unit development, a public hearing is required. The public hearing was scheduled and noticed, uh, for, um, June twenty seventh. However, the applicant, applicant, uh, subsequently requested that the hearing be res- rescheduled and therefore that is why it is occurring tonight, July eleventh. And at our last meeting, uh, the board indicated that we should ask residents and members of the public to state objections if any clearly when they speak. Um, members of the Board of Trustees also asked for the opportunity to engage in discussion with members of the public either during the public hearing or, uh, at the conclusion of the public's remarks, whichever makes sense. And we usually start our, uh, public hearings with a, a presentation by the applicant. Is the, there are representative of the applicant present. Please come forward, introduce yourself, um, and fill us in, uh, as succinctly as possible.
Okay. Good evening, my name is Josh Wardini, one fifty West Second Street, well, welcome with Etkin, uh, the applicant on behalf of the, uh, landowner. Um, I didn't know that I was making a full presentation, but what you described is accurate. Um, we've, uh, been in about a two and a half year journey, uh, to try to figure out a new life for the property. As you guys well know, the, uh, movie studio has closed. And in order for us to be able to market the property to a potential next user, we, um, need to amend the PUD. Because when the PUD was originally granted, it was singular in nature and it was only granted for, um, a movie theater. Since the pandemic and, uh, some of the other things that have happened, the movie industry, uh, in specific in the way that, uh, studio was built has changed, um, and how people view movies and what would have to change with the building in order to make it attractive. It just costs a lot of money. We've been down the path with a couple of different users, um, and just don't feel it's feasible to go and spend the money on that. We are the landowner. We had leased that property to the actual operator. Um, we are not the operator. So, uh, our next steps are to try to figure out what we can do with the property, whether it be reusing the building or not. Um, and as part of that, uh, with the help of planning, um, your outside planning, uh, consultant and the Planning Commission. We've, uh, had several discussions and several meetings to, uh, put together a list of uses um, that we believe, uh, have merit to market, uh, and hopefully find someone to bring forth with a specific site plan. We don't have a specific site plan, uh, to date because we don't know what we can offer to the public, uh, to lease, uh, to. So, um, really that's what it involves. We're trying to put together a list of uses that would be approved, uh, so that we don't find ourselves in kind of the position that we're in right now with a singular use, um, you know, either now or in the future. Uh, and that's what we're, uh, proposing. Uh, the uses, there's eight of them. Some are standalone uses and some we've worked with Pirate Commission to be part of, uh, a mixed use development, uh, which we've defined as two or more of the uses on a list. Um, I'd be happy to answer any other specific questions, um, that you may have.
If you would, uh, sort of stay with us, um, what I'd like to do is open the public hearing, um, offer the opportunity for, uh, members of the public to address, um, the, the board during the public hearing. And then there may be questions during discussion after that.
Okay. And, um, will you be open to if, if Matt or, or Doug are on, when, when would you expect them to chime in? Especially given the, the Dykma letter. I know Doug had some ideas on that.
We could call on them. Um, I, I, are they both elevated to analyst or whatever?
Not yet, they both just wait.
Okay, why don't we, why don't we wait until after the public hearing comes and then we can have a discussion and then we can include our consultants?
Okay.
Are there, um, so at, at this time, I'd like to call a public hearing to order. Um, it's eight thirty-two, uh, by my watch. Um, are there members of the public who would like to speak during the public hearing on this matter? Please come forward. And it's a public hearing, so you each have up to five minutes to speak to the board.
Evening Commissioners, thank you for your time. My name is Sam Kilberg. I'm counsel for Jackson Street Associates in A D C L C. Uh, excuse me, uh, three nine five seven seven Woodward Avenue, Suite three hundred, Bloom Hills, Michigan. Um, as I said, I'm counsel. As I said, I'm counsel for Jackson Street Associates and AEDC, and I'm here with some representatives of the property owners. These are the parcels located directly to the southeast and southwest of Goodrich Theater. So talking about Carlisle Grill and the strip mall that is, you know, La Casa, cigars, Bubba House. You know, you know, you know the parcels I'm talking about. We're here because obviously this is going to impact these parcels. We've reviewed it and I've submitted a letter, which I know was mentioned. We've gone through, reviewed everything. And, and quite frankly, to summarize it, we understand this is going to be developed. The Goodrich Theater is, you know, it's gonna have to get redeveloped, and we understand that. We agree with the uses that are being proposed with a couple of exceptions. We are proposing, and we would like for you to consider, capping restaurant bars for both standalone and mixed use. Just any restaurant or bar should be capped at fifty seats. And then the reason for that is it would oversaturate that area. You have already existing, you know, uses that are going on. We don't wanna see, you know, an Applebee's or a big, you know, chain or something that's gonna generate a hundred, two hundred, you know, cars on a given day that could overflow parking. It could be just issues. So we'd like to see the restaurants and bars capped at fifty is the number that we've come up with. But we'd like for there to be discussion and consideration on that. Besides that, ideally, we would like, and you know, if they could push for residential as being the predominant choice, you know, getting foot traffic in there, mixed use, first floor retail, many apartments and condos up top. I think that's only gonna drive foot trafficker, and, and that's only gonna benefit everybody. And so that's really what we'd like to see pushed. Separately, and I know we're just talking about uses here today, we're gonna bring it up because it's gonna be a major factor. The redevelopment of this site will negatively impact the surrounding parcels. This is going to be a massive construction project. It is going to be construction, debris, dust. I know that's not to be considered here today, but we wanted to bring it to your attention because it's on, it's on our minds. This is gonna be a massive endeavor. We'd hope to work with, you know, the developer to make sure that proper safeguards. And we'd like this township to make sure and keep in mind that proper safeguards need to be put in place to protect those existing buildings while construction's happening. And with that, you know, I'm here to answer any questions. Representatives of property owners are, are going to speak and also are here to answer questions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Sam, you know, does he have your letter? You know?
Apologies, I guess. Do you have your copy, Mike?
This one's got no.
No, I have one. He may or may not have it. The owner, I have one.
John is handing it to you.
Yeah, that's.
Can I share with him?
Yeah, no, I need to submit it to public record.
Okay, okay, there you go.
I, you received the.
Yes, yes, it's in the public packet in our plan as we're.
Hello, everybody. My name is Costa Butzakakis. And I call me Gus. I own the property in the southwest corner of the parcel. And I welcome the, you know, the Etkin properties to, you know, for what they're trying to do. I love to see it. I love to see something different than what's there now. And my concerns are like Sam says about the parking. It's a common parking. So, so therefore, you know, restaurants use a lot of parking and I have a lot of seats. And I can show you many examples. Could you, you probably already know. My biggest concern is the, the construction is gonna be massive. How they're gonna get in and out? What are they proposing? I'd like to work with the developers. So you propose to get in from the main entrance or from the, from my driveway, okay? Which is the, the west end of it. West end of it, you know, I got people that hold events over there, like sales, et cetera, like sun and snow, you've probably seen that. And they park a lot of cars. Semis going through it, you know, right next to both sides, it's gonna be an issue. And obviously, there's gonna be a lot of semis, a lot of heavy loads, a lot of wear and tear for the area. So I hope that the folks will work with us to, to do something with it. Location of the buildings as well, I'm pretty sure that I'm gonna do something unusual. The board is, does a wonderful job. So is the planning commission. So is, so is the folks here. Such as placing a building right up against your parking. That kills everything for the rest of us. Even though they say, well, this is my envelope. Can I put it here on the envelope? You know, I don't think they should. I think it should be somewhere where we can still have common parking as we do now because that's part of the PUD. Okay, that's part of it. So, and, and those are, for me, those are my major concerns. I like to see a raised eyeshadow, actually commercial. Doesn't really matter. Either one of them is better than what we have right now. We have nothing, you know, right now. And nothing but cost, you know, right now, you know, wear and tear. So I would definitely, I would definitely like to, whatever it is up to me, I like to help out as much as I can. And I like to see it developed. But those are my main concerns. Not to happen because it's really gonna devalue our end of the property. Thank you.
Tracking this stuff, just a couple of things I heard, very salient points, right? Is where is the egress and ingress? And he's right, that, that lot's gonna get torn up. Is there gonna be, whether it provides those, hey, you're gonna repave that whole parking lot when you're done? You're gonna get it back up to, it's not fair that John's existing business, I know Costa, by the way, were there all the time too. Is, is impacted, right? I wouldn't want that impacted. So, I don't know, a planning commission.
Well, yeah, I mean, look at the problems we've had with garbage in Jonathan Greenberg's yard. I mean, this is like on a whole bigger scale.
Oversate, right?
So ordinance officer, all of us.
Let's just make sure too, one of the things that I thought Jonathan brought up was like he said, the last builders, every day they cleaned up everything spick and span, prior to the Toll Brothers. They said they'd come out there, they had the cleaning brigade that would make sure everything spick and span, because he's got an existing property. They're, they're coming in eight hours a day, coming and leaving. He's there twenty-four seven. What, you kinda have to go that extra mile, right? To really make sure you're really cleaning up everything that you left behind and leaving it, you know, equal to or better than how you found it that day.
Can I, can I suggest, unless you had a question for the person who's speaking, why don't we let, why don't we work our way through the pub, members of the public?
Yeah, just making sure we get all this data.
We'll pivot.
There's already our presence of Tollis.
We'll pivot to it. I, I, I understand. I'm just saying, in, in terms of keeping the meeting sort of organized, why don't we work our way through the members of the public and then we'll have a discussion? And maybe there'll be more questions and answers. Please introduce yourself.
Yeah, thank you. You, my name is Costa Romanes. I'm John Sun, South Township member. Thank you. You actually, you know, you really did refer to exactly our concerns. So I'm here speaking on behalf of my father, John Romanes. We opened up the business early two thousand and three. My, my family was kind of weighing all the options and assessing what it looked like to open up a business in the outskirts, quote unquote. And, you know, we were encouraged by board members and officials, South Township officials, and Peter Allen and our, and our colleague, Costa Butzakakis. We decided to purchase the lot in front of Quality Sixteen. And at that time, many national companies and chains considered buying this, considering buying the same lots ultimately declined because of insufficient parking. That comes up a lot, lack of egress, zero foot traffic. According to the, those corporations, the real estate in that part of town was considered inadequate. These are the words they used, inadequate, second tier. My father also hesitated before building. The first standalone restaurant was then an untested, undeveloped market. But he truly believed in, in the neighborhood and so do I, and we still do. Two years after we opened Carlisle Grill, we had the two thousand and eight financial crisis. And took an additional five years to grow that business to a point that was stable. And then we had the pandemic. And so us, like many other restaurants, we had to kind of fight tooth and nail to make sure that the beloved restaurant, local restaurants are, are still open. So I, I share with this you tonight because of the context to highlight the, the significant role local businesses play in, in the South Township and our growth as a community. And where we all wanna go to, the strategic planning that you were talking about. So with that in mind, I wanna kindly request a couple of things. One, when allowing for new construction projects, bear in mind that we're gonna suffer during those activities and adequate barriers established throughout the period. And all to include easy access for customers coming in and out. So we don't want the customers to be diverted. If the positioning of the new building moves closer to our business, as Mr. Butzakakis said, will definitely impede in our parking for our customers and it'll be an inconvenience and it'll discourage people from coming to our establishment. So it doesn't make sense to move it closer to where the building already is. You know, I, I think there's a big winner in what this property should look like. Given the current marketing conditions and the proximity downtown, we advocate that you prioritize residential mixed use development. Makes the most sense. I think everybody would prefer that. More people, more residents, more taxes, more mixed use, more foot traffic. If new restaurants are to be introduced in the area, we'd request a maximum of fifty seats to be implemented. This consideration will help prevent oversaturation in the market, healthier, more sustainable business environment for all establishments there already. Because we were the ones who were able to bet on the place early on. So I'd just like to emphasize that neither my family nor I have ever lived in, in our, excuse me, anywhere else other than in Arbor. Personally, I've been living here my entire life. I live down the street. My sister lives down the street. And, you know, we, we're looking forward to continuing our investment in the community. So thank you for your time.
Um, Costa, I have a quick question about the fifty. Where does that number, if you could share a little insight with me about where that number comes from in terms of the industry and trying to prioritize local? Where does that fifty?
Yeah, so fifty is a number that kind of dictates what kind of restaurants and food service and beverage service will be. So, you know, welcome, you know, other restaurants, but it, it'll prohibit, it, it doesn't allow like an Applebee's, you know, another large restaurant that requires a lot of parking. So the type of food service that will be there caters to a different type of flow of customers that won't take up the, the space, the, the parking space.
And is there a correlation between that fifty and being local? Is, for example, is there a correlation between, is it big chains are typically more than fifty and local are fifty or fewer or not necessarily?
No, it's, it's mostly just the, the idea of having a different kind of business that can coexist.
Okay.
And I'm assuming if there's two smaller restaurants, the total would be fifty? Or is it just per, to, per restaurant that could go into this potential multi-use?
Well, I, that's, yeah, I, I assume, you know, one building, you know, would be one cap of fifty, yeah, fifty seats per restaurant. I guess I can't really imagine more buildings, but maybe that's just the lack of imagination.
Well, I mean, I was looking at the six-story, three hundred units or whatever. And if there's retail at the bottom, there's a restaurant over here, a restaurant, you know, all in the same building. So that's where I was.
No, that's, I think, I think that idea of fifty was to, to make sure that it's a business that interacts well.
Yeah.
The rest of businesses. Yeah. Thank you.
Linda Smith, South Township resident, four-one-four, West Lebry. I think this is an obvious inbuilt project and would support it heavily as a compatible with existing businesses in that PUD. And taking into strong account the infrastructure that's there now. When that theater went in, the water detention rules were much different than they are now for Washington County Water Resource. The ingress and egress for the volume of traffic that would come out of this new proposed mixed fuse likely will require a change to the curb cuts and some changes to landscaping up front just to get the cars in and out. Restaurants, I, I, I understand their requirement of fifty seats or less, but I think we should be very careful not to allow drive-throughs because again, we have a ingress, egress, and we cannot afford to have another Starbucks line coming out onto Jackson Road trying to get through. Well, I, you know, drive, drive-throughs are lovely, but not in this location. It doesn't, it doesn't suit. If they would like to put in multi-resident housing, I think that would be a great use for this site. Absolutely. I would agree though that we do have some severe issues with South Township's fire department being able to reach upper levels of multi-story buildings. And so it needs to sort of be taken into account where the buildings are placed on the lot. Both for the compatibility of the existing use on this PUD as well as for what the fire department can get to, what's going to be allowed by water resource when they add additional onsite retention on this site and how they're going to be able to fit large towers onto this site. It may require them to go up because they will not be able to go out. But if we're looking for community benefit from the developer, and I am a developer who has paid heavy community benefits in the past, I would like to suggest that a fire truck come into this discussion if they insist they wanna go up six stories. Just say, you know, if you, if you wanna put it in, you need to have us be able to service it. So we strongly advocate infilling this property. I think that this is a natural site for one. But please make sure we take into account what the site's going to have to look like to meet the current requirements with both the road commission curb cuts as well as the new detention rules before we tell them what their volume of people can be on the site.
Right.
It's sort of a cart and horse as far as zoning versus what has to happen on the site. But that could be done with some questions to some of those agencies and some proposed ideas. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, everybody. Ryan Abel, seventy-five thirty-five Jackson Road. I'll echo what everyone else already said. Probably the two largest things to me about that particular site, I think this project makes a lot of sense. I think especially, hopefully, our bout proposal for our fire addition passes this year. And probably by the time the site is marketed appropriately and sold off to whoever's going to eventually develop it, we tie it nicely with the estimated schedule of that fire station opening. So I think Linda's statement about fire truck makes a lot of sense. The ingress, egress of that site already is kind of sketchy, sketchy at times. There's people driving in the wrong way. There's people parking in the driveway. It gets very creative and it's lucky we don't have more traffic incidents. Parking is a huge issue at that site. I'll, I'll just say that, especially when Carlisle gets busy, their parking lot fills up a lot. And with both the boba tea, the nail salon, the cigar shop, there, that's a very heavy intensive use of that parking lot. And those businesses rely on being able to use the overflow fill from the theater area to have more of the parking for their customers. Just things to think about is sort of that process of working with where the building envelope will ultimately be sort of some of the people's cart before the horse. That's the thing to keep in mind. Ultimately, project makes perfect sense for where it is and for the density and for the infill.
What makes perfect sense on time?
For the density and the infill.
What makes perfect sense on time?
The density in that area. So the wires through our district, it's close to transportation. It makes sense, but just keep those things in mind as we're moving forward in this process. Thanks, everybody.
Is there anyone else present in the hall who would like to speak during the public hearing? Let's turn to those participating remotely.
Rob Evans, go ahead, please.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I strongly agree with Linda Smith for a slightly different reason. And that is that SIO Township has absolutely no right to put firefighters' lives in danger. And a six-story building with no ladder truck is doing exactly that. So making a fire truck part of this conversation, if it's gonna, I don't think it should, it should have been put through as six stories. I think that we live close to the highway and that building and that site is much closer to the highway than we are. And I would not wanna live any closer to the highway. I'm not sure that's a proper place for residential. But I will just repeat again, we have no right to put firefighters' lives in danger for a six-story building. for a six-story building until they have the proper equipment. I, I can't state that strongly enough. Thank you.
Anyone else want to speak? Raise your hand. I don't see any hands raised. Oh, hold on, Jonathan Rehber. Go ahead, Jonathan.
Hey folks, I just want to echo Rob and Linda's points. We have no right putting our firefighters or our guests who may be staying in the fifth or sixth floor in a hotel when we have no way of rescuing them in the case of a fire or whatever type of housing it is. We were further informed that even now the fire truck doesn't have the type of reach it needs to get over the big box buildings like Lowe's and what's the other one, Menards. So we have a situation already. We're not talking about a future potential dangerous possibility. We live with that every day. And now we absolutely need to include the safety measures. We need to make sure people are, are secure in their homes by insisting a truck with adequate ladder height is included in this. So thank you very much for listening. Have a great night.
Anyone else want to speak? Raise your hand. Can I, can I make my speech?
Sure, please come on up.
Sure, I've listened to a lot of thoughtful comments about existing properties. Perhaps it can be consideration for underground parking for this building. It shouldn't infringe on the existing building businesses. And if it is residential, that limits those people to the underground even for retail. So maybe that's a solution.
Are there any other? In that case, let's close the public hearing at 8:55 and turn to discussion. Do we want to start with? Oh, you want a five-minute break? Okay. Why don't we take a break? We'll come back at nine o'clock and at that point, maybe we can offer our consultants an opportunity to.
I'd like to get Doug, Matt, and also.
It's 9:02. And we have with us our consultants.
Yeah, hopefully one of the panelists right now. I hope you're taking notes to take back to the planning.
We've got minutes. I'm taking, I'm taking some notes. So yeah, so do we have Doug and Matt? Are you present?
They're all promoted.
They're all promoted. Doug, Matt?
Hello, I'm here.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll be here too.
All right. Thank you. We were calling the meeting back to order and we wanted to start by giving each of you an opportunity to weigh in on some of the questions that have been raised and any other thoughts you would like to share.
Well, yeah, thanks for having me. This is mentioned, this PUD amendment does, you know, has a very limited list of uses that that list of uses was reduced. The applicant first came to us with a rather extensive list and through a few meetings with the planning commission and I believe a subcommittee meeting or two, that list was reduced to what you have in front of you. The, there's a couple of key points to to this approval, you know, should the township board wish to move this forward? And that is in our memo of June 2nd, at the, at the bottom of the memo, we talk about two additional conditions, one that was placed on the part of the planning commission. And that is that the amended PUD is subject to negotiation of further public benefit based on the project's increased impact on township services. So that would, that condition, if ultimately made by the township board, I believe would address some of the concerns that have been raised by the public as far as, you know, contributions of fire department, things like that for, you know, a, a, a facility or, you know, a six-story building or, or whatever facility might require additional, you know, additional, you know, or have additional impacts on the existing fire department. So that would leave that door open. There, there, there very well could be some uses that there are some of the uses of that list might not require any additional, you know, fire contribution, but there could be some that, that would. And so depending on the use that's ultimately selected by the developer, this condition would, would keep that door open for further negotiation when we see exactly what's being proposed. And then the last one is maybe obvious, but just so everyone is sure, everyone understands that any final, any, any, any development that comes forward would require full final, you know, full site plan review. So, you know, just because this list of uses would be approved by the township, it doesn't mean that's the end of the story. You know, this, this would have to go through full-blown site plan approval, which then would address some of the other comments raised by members of the public with regard to access, access management, parking, stormwater detention. You know, all of those things would be addressed once we know what exactly the applicant is bringing forth. It's hard to answer those questions without knowing, you know, what it is that the applicant's proposing. It would just be kind of an academic exercise to try to figure out, you know, based on what they're proposing, you know. Is the current access okay? Is the current stormwater detention base an okay? Is the current parking okay? So it's just that I, I don't, you know, I understand the concern, but I think I would be, I would be comfortable waiting to see exactly what was proposed, knowing that if this final condition is placed in your motion, that it has to go through full site plan approval and all of those things will be discussed. There was one other, one other item that I spoke to Clerk Flintoff about today. And that was the letter from the, the two other owners, the Carlisle and the Strip Center. The, the letter from their attorney that was discussed this evening. And that is a, that is a condition. Well, a couple of things on that. One, if you look at the list of uses that they're proposing, restaurant slash bar is only allowed as part of a, part of a mixed use project where two of the standalone parts, one through four, either multifamily office, you know, indoor recreation or lodging. So two of those would have to be in place as a mixed use project to allow, to allow a restaurant and a bar. So you couldn't, so that's not a standalone use. So that condition in and of itself, how it's been presented, how it's left the planning commission would, would be, in, you know, my opinion, be a pretty limiting factor on the size of the restaurant. So I, I, you know, we're not talking about a, a big standalone restaurant. However, that being said, if, if the, if the township board so desired to place such a condition on, on this request, you certainly could do that. You could follow what the applicants or what the, the outlaw attorney is suggesting when that's a 50-seat maximum. Or you could come up with something else, maybe based on some additional research. I, I just received that letter this afternoon, so I did not have time to, you know, look into what does a 50-seat restaurant even look like? I don't even know what that looks like or what kind of restaurant that would be. I think maybe that's where Clerk Flintoff was trying to get to is what, what is that even, what does that even look like? So I think maybe a little research on that point, but the board certainly could make a condition, if you so desired, you certainly could make a condition that, that the restaurant part, even though it's already restricted, that it has to be part of a conditional or a mixed use that, that, that could be limited to 50. But that would, that would be completely up to you. Again, this is a planned unit or this is a PUD and it's a major PUD amendment. So this is a case where the township may place conditions on the approval. And these don't necessarily have to be conditions that the applicant agrees with. So just, just so you know, there are certain kind of approvals we make where the applicant, where we can't really change what the applicant's proposing. This is not one of those cases. We can actually impose our own conditions if, you know, as long as they are, you know, as long as they're conditions that help to fulfill the standards of the PUD ordinance. So, um, so that's, that's, that's what I got. I think that addressed some of the public's comments. I think it addressed maybe some of the other items that Clerk Flintoff and I discussed earlier, earlier this afternoon.
Thank you.
Happy to try to answer any, any other questions that you may have.
Matt, why, why don't we give you an opportunity to speak too? And then we can see if there's questions from members of the board.
Okay. Um, yeah, in your packet or actually recently added to your packet, I included a, a January memo. And essentially what our team did was just kind of put together just how unique this is with the, the change of use. We thought it was helpful just to kind of give the board and the planning commission a guide on, you know, what the different considerations. We kind of ranked the different uses that they were looking at in medium, low and high sewer usage. Obviously sewer capacity is always of concern in Syo and the current site uses about 35 REU. And, and so when, when, when something more dense or intense comes in as part of the site plan process that Doug was walking you through and they'll have to, you know, fully develop a site, site plan, come back, they would probably more than likely, if it was more intense, have to come back and also be asking for additional REUs. So take that into account. On page one, it's a simple site description. Site two is the table that they provided of different options and we categorize those as medium, low, low, high. And then we included the different permits and, and approvals. One other thing too, if this was a full demo of the building and, and, and rip out of the parking lot, the new water resources, Linda Smith mentioned that the new water resources standards would apply and likely quite an expansion of, of whatever detention facilities were in versus if it was just a reuse of a building. A lot of times you can get all around having to do that, but this would probably trigger those new standards. So some of that impervious surface and buildable area would probably be used up by stormwater management. So lots of things to consider, but from an engineering standpoint, I mean, it's in the water sewer district. It has current sewer and water access and infrastructure going to the existing theater. So that can be reused in a lot of ways. So, and then one gentleman brought up like access and coming in and out with construction traffic, I think undoubtedly we would require, you know, resurfacing and re, repaving of any kind of construction road access in and out, whenever, whatever the proposed new use is, I think, whether it's high density or low density, it's going to take a beating and that would be heavily considered in our review. So if there's any questions about our memo from January, I'm, I'll be happy to answer. But ours was generally focused on, you know, impacts the sewer and what, what the decisions on what the developer is going to do will have on the future requests for REUs.
Sure. Why don't we go around? I think, yeah, let's, let's start with you, trustee here.
I did read through. What, what is the zoning right now? That's where I didn't see that in here. What is allowed without rezoning?
Theater, just.
Just a theater?
Okay.
Yep. Yeah, it's currently, the property is currently zoned PUD. And it was very specific. The, 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 so the main, when this property was first developed and zoned, the, the movie theater was a known commodity. The two outlets were unknown, unknown commodities. And so the theater came first and then there were some parameters, kind of like what we're trying, what the developer, what, what we're trying to accomplish tonight. There were, there were kind of a list of uses that would have been acceptable on the two outlets. And now we're kind of flipping it. Now we know what's on the two outlets and we're trying to develop a list of uses that would be acceptable on the, where the theater was. But right now it's on PUD and based on that PUD, the only thing that could happen on the site is a movie theater.
And there, in the attorney letter from Dykma, it talks about there's a, like a master deed or whatnot, and how does this rezoning affect that with, would it? I don't know.
Actually, a lot of it goes to parking, access, shared parking between movie theaters and stuff like that. As far as the zoning and use, that's all township per view.
Okay.
The master deed goes to the parcels. A lot of this parking and access.
Yeah. And so when I was reading through, thank you, I'm sorry, the multifamily use. And I know that the township has talked, been talking about denser and especially along where the water sewer. And when I read that six stories and then 20 to 30 units per acre and there's about what, 10 acres there, 11? So times that by, let's go with the highest amount of 30 units, 300 units-ish. And that's a lot of REUs. I mean, so this, this plan right here is just to rezone or have more available. But we have to keep in mind for the township that we have what, about 1,200 REUs left? And this would eat up a lot. And then there's other, other developments that are potentially on the, you know, in the plans. So I think that we need to really consider this. And I, and again, this isn't to say that you're coming to us and saying, oh yeah, we're going to do six, six stories with 300 units or whatever, but there's that potential. I'm a little concerned, little, you know, nervous about this, but and I'm in, I am in support of this. And also going back to the fire department, there was some, is there, are there hydrants there already? So are they in the back too where the theater, I know that if it's a six-story residential, they're going to have to have internal fire suppression and whatnot.
There's, there's hydrants, but with any, I mean, O H M will tell you, with any new site plan, there's, you know, there's design aspects that will have to go into it for distances between where fire trucks can hook up to their connections. So that would all be part of the site design and site plan approval.
Okay, sorry. I was making notes as I was going through earlier, so bear with me here. So this, if somebody said this is a little backwards because usually the developer would come with a plan, but where actually this would be for us to eventually vote on saying, okay, yeah, you can have all, you know, any of these depending on, you know, marketing. So what is the process after this, this part, after it's approved to or potentially approved? What would the next step be? You would market and then bring back to what?
Yeah, we would, we would begin marketing it for the approved uses. And once we had a potential deal, we would have to come back through like Doug mentioned with a site plan approval packet. We'd have discussions before that obviously, but we'd have to go through a full site plan approval process with planning commission and then your board.
Okay. And you would be working with the other parcel owners?
Yeah, once we know what, what the market would bear, yeah, right now I can't, I don't have anything to talk about, but yeah.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
I think that may be it. Oh, you took my, okay. Did you see any notes in there? Okay, now I think you've already answered the question. Okay, thank you.
Trustee Noel?
I have a general question. Where did the six stories come from? I guess I, to Doug, or how did we come up with that number?
Take myself off mute. That was helpful. I, I believe the six-story number came from the applicant. I know there was a, the, the idea in, in trustee risers there, he can chime in if I say something that's not quite right from the planning commission. But I know. But I know there was um, a fair amount of support from the members of the planning commission to, to. Uh, provide density on this site and, you know, substantial density. I don't, I don't recall many of the planning commissioners. Voicing a lot of concern about the six-story. I think there was general support for that. I don't recall where the first idea of six stories came from and maybe trustee riser remembers, I don't.
Mike, Josh, but the planning commission wanted density inside a township where we have infrastructure to support it. And they wanted, they wanna, and, and that's what it came at. And there was talk about, you know, the number of stories. Um. And that's, it was, six was approved by the planning commission and Josh, you might want to have some to put up the number.
Yeah, I mean, it, it, it all comes down to feasibility, what things cost, what will make sense. Uh, there could be somewhat of a, a mixed design on this too, where. You know, um, if we were approved for the density, but say five stories was what made sense. Um, someone had uh, talked earlier about parking. If we had that type, there's a lot of circular stuff here that ties back into potentially the detention. If the detention has to be increased, we may look to do detention underground. Um, or we may have to increase the pond depending, but if we do that, then parking may get affected. Parking gets affected, we may have to look at. Building, a building on top of parking, which then will lead you to maybe four, five, six stories to make the overall project work. So. We talked about density in the, in the light of this was, it sounded like where the infrastructure was in place and then what we have on the site. Um, from a detention standpoint and parking standpoint, it might lead itself into a higher level. Uh, if we, you know, if those numbers worked out, you know, from a revenue and construction cost standpoint.
So this is just kind of a bribe?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it didn't come from, we must have this or must have that. It's just.
Trustee Noel's turn, right?
Sorry.
It was on the top of my head, hey, Mark and I can do that. So. Do we have an R U calculation, Matt, for three hundred apartments or units, three hundred units-ish?
Uh, three hundred apartment units, depending on the square foot, would be about two hundred and fifty to three hundred R U.
And. Yeah, I thought I saw it, but now I can't find it. It's okay, I just, um. And what is the remaining number that you say we have?
Uh, hundred. Total R U's in the, yeah, somewhere between twelve and fifteen hundred.
And I just want to say, I am supportive of the concept. Of considering the needs of the currently existing businesses.
Absolutely.
I mean, I, I think that this letter um, from Dykema is. Very appropriate and these concerns are reasonable. That's it, thank you.
Quick, send them.
Um, sure, uh. One, I, I concur. I think the requests from the adjacent neighbors make a lot of sense to support our local existing business. Um, I have a, a question about why, why does Doug, what, how, how in the world would lodging? In that location, why does that make sense for Siota Township? That strikes me as like a hotel right there. Um, how would that help us meet our goals? What am I missing?
So.
Is a hotel, isn't that what lodging is? A hotel?
Yes, so what, I, what, can you ask a question again? I'm sorry.
Sure, um, the planning commission is recommending that lodging be a proposed use. And, you know, we're talking about, I, I support tall buildings, I support multifamily housing, I support our fire department, I support our local businesses. I support using our R U's wisely. Um, to that end, why would we use our precious R U's? Um, and our precious infrastructure for lodging when what we need is housing. And I'm just wondering how it kind of fits in. With our broader planning goals. How, how would it? Why, why did lodging have such merit?
There was, you know, my recollection, the applicant might chime in as well. But my recollection is that the applicant was trying to provide, the applicant provided a list of uses that they believed. Could be marketable on the site. The planning commission. Uh, hone that list down. Lodging, I don't believe was, was one of the uses. That the planning commission raised specifically, they raised specifically. Um. Multifamily, uh, multifamily housing or housing on the site. Um, however, it was one of those uses that, you know, could cause some or could create some. Synergy at the site and that was always sort of the idea at the Goodrich Theater P U D. That all the uses would sort of work together. And so this particular, a, a lodging use, I think was. Talked about and thought of as a use that could work with the rest, you know, because people who are staying at a hotel would like to go to a restaurant. People who are staying at a hotel would probably go to a strip center, uh, first, you know, to pick up a few things. So um, that, I believe that is the reasoning was that um, it, it provided that sort of. Cohesion of what, what the P U D initially was trying to accomplish. Um, but I will agree with you that the planning commission, they're, they're more, they're, they're. Uh, preference was residential, just straight up residential.
Yeah, that, that would be mine. I guess I, I guess, and again, like, you know, planning is not my area of expertise. I live near here. I, I, I think that, you know, a hotel would be a, a, that would be a poor place for a hotel to be. So I was just curious about who the champion within the township was for lodging being on that list. It sounds like maybe there wasn't an objection. Was there not much discussion at the planning commission about putting a hotel right there?
No, I, I don't think there was, I don't think there was a champion and there also wasn't, I, I don't, I don't recall a big objection, objection to that idea.
Okay.
Can I just, uh, just.
Sure, yeah, please.
I mean, we've developed multiple, multiple hotels as things standalone or as part of mixed uses. Um, these guys can attest, uh, hotels are very compatible with a lot of different mixed uses.
Sure.
Because the daytime trips, the time people are parking, where they're going, when they stay in Michigan is traditionally. Uh, you know, business travel type thing.
Sure.
Um, it was one of the uses that could facilitate, you know, inhabiting the restaurants and the strip center.
Sure.
You had the resources with the water and the sewer there and it's also on a freeway. So, you know. As part of a mixed-use hotel and a lot of, a lot of occasions, you know, tends to be near freeways.
Certainly, and the nearer freeway is the person who lives near the freeway. That area, you know, that, I'm just saying, I think that, that would be a pretty significant. Change. I just, I won't spend more time on it. I just have concerns about that um, use, yes.
Sometimes, uh, long-term stay lodging can also be converted that to residential, kind of down the road.
Understood. Um, and, and then Doug, what is the um. I'm, can you give me just an example of like office technology research? Like what is an example? Of office technology research that we have now in SIO? What does that look like?
Office technology research would probably be like a Turumo heart building.
Okay.
Where they have, you know, they're doing research on. On artificial hearts and there's, you know, doctors working there and like high-tech, you know.
Okay. Great. And then just a last quick question for our fire chief who I know is on, um, chief, I, some of the, I'm, I'm in support of. The ladder truck and all the equipment needed to keep our firefighters safe and I feel like there's a little bit of a. Inaccurate conflation going on between the height of buildings going up and the need for a ladder truck. Could you please um. Uh, speak to us about, about your needs. Um, when we're considering buildings more than one story.
Uh, sure. So, so what I would say is the existing building on that site. Uh, we can't reach uh, the roof of that building without a ladder truck today.
Right.
Um, that, that's not to say that if, you know, the board considered a six-story building. Uh, that would lessen that need, it would exacerbate that need. Uh, however, those buildings are generally built uh, with robust fire protection systems. Uh, so, so we would have ability to fight the fire with inside the building with the built-in fire suppression systems. Uh, as well as increasing the need uh, for a ladder truck for fire suppression.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, should we keep going around or um, I saw John's hand.
My questions are answered.
Just, I, I just want to summarize, right? I, you know, in my mind, so we have a dead building, you know, a three hundred Z even in the making. Or even the making. I think I hear legitimate concerns, impact infrastructure, fair enough. Impact local business more than fair enough, should be literally zero. Nobody wants to go that. I've been there, based on retail business, understand that. But right now, what I'm hearing is, we, we have a person who wants to go out and say, hey, let me go see what I can do with this building. We know there's a lot of office space and other dead space up here right now. Let me see what we do. We don't have to make a decision day. There's safety valves, what I'm hearing from our, our folks on, on the internet here. In the Zoom call, there's safety valves in place. So it's not like this thing go way off the rails and some kind of development, whether it be a six-story building or three hundred users. We use too many R U's, all those, we've got some controls in place. We don't have to necessarily make that decision today. And, you know, this thing becomes unfettered in the future. That's kind of what I'm hearing. Unless I'm wrong. That's what I heard.
Well, we, we, I, I, I think.
I think you're almost right.
Yeah, I was gonna say, very close. Um, that I think there, there are some, well, the, as, as the model motion shows. Uh, planning commission was trying to split some parameters around what um, they thought would be an appropriate list. Of potential uses for the marketing of the, the theater building, the former theater building. And we could, we could add to, the board could either take some of those out or we could. Uh, we could, we could put more in, um, if we wanted to. I think what um, Doug was trying to make a distinction between was. The, the, that list of potential uses and some of the concerns that were great, or actually it was Doug and Matt were, were making a distinction between the. Conditions on the P U D and the kind of the concerns, many of them are more site plan related. And so there's, there's some things that yes, would be addressed later.
Something like lodging and correct me if I'm wrong, Will, that, you know, say lodging is approved. Not that we're taking action tonight, but if lodging's approved and the site plan comes in with lodging. Well, then we need to consider it as on an even playing field as we would with everything else. So, so. It, this is um, the scope of this matters.
So, so maybe to your point, you know, maybe the impact infrastructure can only be X, right? By, by the fault that may limit what the logic could look like or something like that.
No, no, no. I mean, if, 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 if I were a board of one, I would just go like that. Right? Take out lodging, unless I've heard a compelling case from the township about that, you know?
But lodging is such a broad term, right? I mean, I, I don't know what that necessarily means. You're thinking like a one, it could be, hey, there's gonna be. Three-bedroom suites that we're going to lodge. I'm just, just saying, but I think, I think your, your point was taken that lodging could greatly impact the infrastructure. So rather than worry about the lodging, worry about the impact of the infrastructure.
Yeah, it, impact on infrastructure, but also just, I don't know that it fits right there. That, that's a.
Oh, the, the, my intuition seems to think that it does.
They seem to have had no proponent or opponent vocally, but they, they approve it, yeah.
Well, I think.
So we don't, we're not gonna solve this.
Yeah, I was gonna say, more to your point, we're not gonna make a decision.
Yes.
Tonight, um, but the point of this was to hold the required public hearing to get input from. Uh, people who are, who have concerns and we certainly have that. And um, to talk it through so that we as a board are able to sort of advance our deliberation, but I think. Actually allowing some time for um, Carla Wortman to do a little bit more research. On some of these questions, I think could be helpful. Um, trustee riser.
So I'm looking at the model motion and it talks about. Uh, the uses which include medical office, dental office, part of the mixed use, multifamily up to six stories. And, and then I'm, then I'm looking, because it references the April twenty-fourth minutes and I'm looking at the April twenty-fourth minutes. At page N and more made it, uh, the motion supported by a human. And we've got medical office, multifamily. Is there a list of what would and wouldn't be an exhaustive list that's clear cut? In the form of the motion?
John, John, can I answer that for you? Because I had to find that and it's in the Dykema letter, page three. Um, is where it's best summarized, um, where it says the proposed standalone uses. Mixed uses with the following additions and modifications.
Yeah, I, I gave mine. Josh, come on, yours again?
Yes, it, I think what it comes down to is this, I don't, I don't know if you're referring to this page.
Yeah, yeah, I am.
When it got to this point, something didn't get.
It, it didn't, and I, and.
But if you look at, if you look at the meeting minutes of the planning commission and the motion that was approved.
Right.
It's in there.
Right.
Just, you have to combine the motion and the meeting minutes from the planning commission.
Yeah, cuz.
Are those whole businesses already paid an attorney?
Whenever it is that we're ready to vote on this, I guess I'm, what I'm gonna ask for. If, if that, that the model motion specifically set forth all the what.
Absolutely, it's gotta be correct.
That's a little, little. That's it.
And this is just to change the P U D for them to have the option to.
Yeah.
Market for this.
But the option and the right.
Yeah, absolutely.
The option and the right for this type of development.
Yeah, because when we do a P U D, we're, we're setting very strict parameters around what the use will be in order to earn that zoning change. And essentially, we're now modifying a zoning change that already has that.
Yeah, we're changing the law.
Yeah, we're changing. So one of the reasons that we're not voting on this tonight is that the clerk pointed out that we lack um, a requisite. Change in the zoning that would have to accompany into action.
Yes, and no evidence.
Yes, so, so that's one of the things that will be.
Mariah's working on that?
Yes, so, so Mariah will be working on that, uh, our township attorney will be working on that between now and our next meeting. And if we can get everything together, we could take action on the twenty-fifth.
But I would like more information on my concern about lodging, education, Doug, anybody who wants, you know, proponents of lodging. At that area, um.
Oh, sure. Got a question, also this, also this is uh, accepted. Uh, are the uh, bylaws of the uh, P U D gonna be rewritten, gonna be redone and. Would that be an effect?
The master deed bylaws?
Yeah.
Or the, or the, or the ordinance will, I think that's what we were just talking about. There will be a change in the ordinance. That will be part of what the board will be voting on.
But he's, he's wondering about, if I understand, excuse me.
Yeah, as far as the rights of the, of the three people that are on the P U D, is that gonna change anything? It's gonna have some effect.
Yeah.
I don't know if it's gonna be.
No, the, the, the condo association and the master deed are between three units.
Yeah.
And then, there's a couple of things at the end I'd like to address. I mean, nothing insurmountable, but I'll wait till everybody, and I can answer that question.
Good.
Okay, John, did you have further?
Oh, no, that was it. Thank you.
All right, why don't you go ahead?
So, just, just really quick and I, I don't think any of these things are insurmountable and we're here to work with these guys. I just don't. Have anything to take to them yet, so that's why we're trying to figure out these uses. And as far as the safety with the fire, we're all in step with making sure everybody's safe. So. That being said, um, just for your benefit, the condo is made up of three units. We're one of the units. And then there's the two retail units. The master deed and the bylaws really, like the attorney has mentioned, talk to access. Um, and parking and in that, the parking really is just saying that. You're gonna use your best effort in your unit to park as close to your building as you can. That's really what it is. If you take apart the units in specific and count up the parking spaces that are in each unit for each building. There, they do at that time meet the parking requirements. It's just that. Humans are innate, a creature of habit. They're gonna want to park as close as they can to the restaurant, which we fully understand. So. When we get to a site plan that we want to promote, we will definitely be working with, um, you know, these two. Groups to make sure that it doesn't affect them adversely. Um, but, and I, and I think we can get around that uh, pretty easily. As it relates to the construction ingress and egress, unfortunately, I don't want to call anything landlocked, but there's only two ways in. Uh, and again, from our perspective, we'll work how, how, how that can be done. Um, with as little impact. We understand there will be impact, but barricades, street sweeps, all the types of things that. You know, O H M is gonna require as part of our logistic plan for any construction project. So I'm sure we can, you know, we can work through, through that. I'm sure we can, you know, we can work through through that. As it relates to the stormwater detention. It it could be that I know that the ordinance have changes and a lot of resources, you know. Designs have changed, and so we're gonna have to meet that regardless. Just note that. Some plan that we might bring forward, depending on what it is, the impervious may go down. But it has to do with some of the coefficients of runoff and things that have changed, you know, since we built this. So we'll have to met, we'll have to meet. Code and ordinance and, you know, we'll work through with your consultants on that. As far as the parking goes, again, whatever development that we bring forth is gonna have to check the box, not only from a. Ordinance, P U D code standpoint, but we're not gonna build something and. Put parking in that's insufficient for us or for our neighbors. You know, we just we're developers. We're not gonna do that. So. Rest assured on that. The only the only one that I would like to have further discussion on. Is and and maybe they can give you numbers based on what their current restaurant is, but fifty seats is very, very light. If you go and look at fifty seats and other spots, the square footage of that building is quite limited. I mean, for you get for your restaurant. How many seats do you have? Like three, four hundred? You got like seven thousand feet or so? Is that what your building is?
Carl's about two hundred sixty.
Yeah.
Seats.
So fifty for, I mean, I'm not saying it needs to be fifty or it has to be eight hundred. I'm saying we need to have more discussion on that. That's all. It's not our, it's it's not our. Goal to try to make something come in and be a direct competitor. We're just saying if something's there or part of a mixed use. We might need to look at that seat count cuz fifty is quite limited. That's that's all. And that's this is the first I'm hearing of it tonight. So that's just my. First take on that. But we did talk to planning with regards to the REUs. So we at that time, we had heard twelve to fifteen hundred are available. You know, our residential might be two to three hundred or so. So at that point, we thought that was something that, you know, if the city wanted residential and. And density fit, but we also understand that it's kind of a first come, first served basis. So that if. We would, you know, if we got approved and that happens six years from now, it's not there. That's our problem. So we did talk through that when we met with planning. And more than likely, any of the buildings that. In in this list that we would build would have fire suppression requirements by code. So just like the fire chief mentioned. So that that was it.
Great. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Why don't we why don't we end there on this particular agenda item? I think we heard a lot of good useful information and and. Issues were raised and we'll work on this and try and have it ready for board action possibly by the twenty fifth. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
That that brings us to. We don't have any unfinished business. So that brings us to new business. The first item is K one. Hopefully, this will be very straightforward. I I put this on here because I was watching closely the. If you're gonna talk, could you could you take it outside and so we can continue the meeting? The. The meeting that was held between Trailwood subdivision and their residence and at which road commission was also present. About the road improvements and the intersection, it became clear that the road improvements that were planned to go forward this. Summer, in fact, would have been under construction already at this point, are not going to happen this year and. Quite possibly, given the changes, it could even be another year before they move forward with the improvements. So given that. I asked the road commission whether it be possible to. Extend the plan that we already had, the township already had with them to do a gravel uplift on the section of Park Road. Between Zeeb and Cedar Ridge to extend that further and do improvement on the rest of the dirt road that would. Have been paved had the trail was improvements gone forward. And I I heard back and so that's why there's a change from our original agenda item. I heard back that it actually would only cost thirty thousand dollars more to do a gravel uplift and extend it. The length of park all the way to the intersection with Stabler and actually to continue up. Stabler where it's unpaved to the portion where it is paved. So that's what this proposal is to do is to sort of modify our original plan and extend that gravel uplift and. Provide at least some improvement to that.
So Will, I know that it was Adam had said about it was ninety thousand?
Total.
Total, yeah. And so this says eighty thousand. I I thought I had read that you had updated.
Well, I didn't I didn't change. You know, unless you printed it out, it should have changed. The material's online. I haven't. I. Thought we had changed that. I thought we had added the update, but. I maybe I should have gone and double checked. But what the what the model motion should read is instead of up to eighty thousand, it should say thirty thousand.
Oh, additional. So you don't wanna put it? Yeah, because we've already approved.
We've already approved sixty thousand. So it's just the additional difference.
Could I offer friendly amendment?
Let me move the motion first.
Sure, you why don't you move the motion and then we can we can talk about it.
Be quicker if we amended it first.
Oh.
Okay.
Sure.
All right. So just to be clear that it's not an additional, I just wanna make it clear that it's part of the existing million dollar appropriation that we're not actually appropriating more. We're authorizing more within that. So to clarify, to authorize an additional not to exceed thirty thousand. Of the currently appropriated ARPA funds. For a gravel uplift.
Et cetera. Okay.
I would I would if that's a motion, I would support it.
One second.
Okay, so moved by Flintoff, support by Riser.
Oh, moved by Riser.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Moved by Riser, support by Kerry.
Okay, moved by Riser, support by Kerry. Is there further discussion?
I'm excited for the residents. It's a temporary fix, but.
Well, my understanding is from Adam at the road commission is that this could happen as soon as the end of this month. Depends on factors like weather and such, but. We we need to call a roll because this is an expenditure.
Noel?
Yes.
Riser?
Yes.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff? Yes. Brazil? Kerry?
Yes.
Motion adopted, seven.
Okay, so that brings us to item G three, which was pulled from the consent agenda.
Come on up.
Why don't you come on up? Thank you for waiting patiently until we got to this. And. Rather than spending a lot of time introducing this, I think trustee Kerry, you had some questions. Why don't you raise your question?
Yes, and. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to scare you. I know this has been a process for you and it has nothing to do with your plan because I'm in support of it. Good luck with the ten children. Yeah. And I know why there's ten and not more because you have to have, you know, more caregivers, you know, the the higher number you go. So this is actually a question for Doug or is Doug in? Yeah, Doug, hi. Okay. So the conditional use and, you know, I was thinking about this. Where you are located is in a rural area and we've had other places that, you know, the event barns and CIO church. That are also conditional use. So those conditional uses. From my understanding, they go with the land and not the business. And why is that? Why can't we have it that it goes with the business? Because maybe eventually you wanna sell and that would go with the next. Person or, you know, business. But why can't it just end if you decide to end it the the as far as the conditional use? Here's my reasoning or my thinking is that, you know, people move out to the country for quiet and they don't expect to have a business next door. So. If it was a temporary temporary for however long you decide to do that, then it would, you know, end at a certain time. Well, if they sell, then those people, the residents are stuck with this conditional use. And who knows? You may be the best business owner, but the next one that comes along may not be. So that's my question. Is this a is this a an ordinance that it has to be with the land or is this a law?
Yeah, it it is a it 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 is both. It's an ordinance and a law. That special land use or sometimes called conditional land use or special land use. Is outlined in the state enabling legislation, Public Act one ten, and it does run with the land. So the thinking there is that. The the while it runs with the land, if whatever conditions are placed on this or the site plan that they provide to the township. That is all that can happen or they can't expand it. If they wanted to, if they wanted to bring in, if one of the conditions is ten children, they wanna bring in an eleventh kid. They're gonna have to come back in front of the in front of the planning commission township board, reopen the conditional land use and kind of start, you know, start over this whole process. So I I believe the thinking is that. If if a community, if a municipality finds that a special land use is acceptable. And that that acceptability is based on a series of conditions. That those conditions can be carried out by any owner and not just the current owner. So we're not tying this to an owner or, you know, a specific business. We're tying it to the conditions and the circumstances that the municipality feels are acceptable. So this is one of those cases that it does run with the land and you. The the township does not have the ability to limit the time. The other aspect to the other aspect to that is that once approved. You know, presumably. The the applicant in it, in this case, it's a daycare, but it could be any special land use. The applicant, you know, presumably would then make a fairly substantial capital investment in this property. And if it was only good for a year or two, or whatever that happens to be, then that capital investment would be lost. So there's 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 a, I think, a protection on on the applicant's end and. But I think most importantly is if you guys believe this is acceptable. You believe it's acceptable for any owner and not just the current owner based on the conditions that you. Apply or you make as part of this motion. So that so it doesn't matter if it's two years from now or ten years from now. And, you know, I've run across actually daycare facilities, one daycare facility in particular that. It's gotta be twenty five years old. It's got a conditional land use permit that's twenty five years old and and we still consider it valid. Because they're they're still meeting the conditions of that daycare. That daycare permit that's over twenty years old.
So could a conditional land use ever be rescinded?
It can be rescinded in in generally, I shouldn't say generally, in in every. Conditional use permit, there's language, you know, we send out, you know, if this is to be approved by the board. Tonight or at some ensuing meeting. The 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 conditional land use permit that we send to the applicant and that we keep in our file has a. A couple of sentences or maybe a little paragraph at the very end, after all the conditions. That give the circumstances of how the conditional land use could be revoked.
And and that is in our in our packet, that process.
Okay, yeah. And and basically what happens, what has to happen is they have to violate one of the conditions of the rule. And then and then they come before the planet, they come before the township board with the for a public hearing. And then they have the right to plead their case, saying that, no, they didn't, you know, violate the special land use. And then, you know, then at that point, it's up to it would be up to the township board to revoke it or not revoke it.
Okay. Well, thank you. Yeah, and I know I I ask questions, but it's not just for me. It's for anybody else that's listening.
And I have a quick question. Doug, it's my understanding that if she wanted to, she could have six by right with us not being able to do anything, correct?
Yeah, family, correct. A family daycare home, anybody in any residential. Circumstance can have up to six children and we would never even know about it. It's something that we we our township would never even be made aware of. It's a use permitted by right, six children. That that are being provided daycare fall under the definition family. And so we would just never even know about it.
So it's kids, seven to a ten, she's.
Yeah, once you go past that six, you have to get special land use.
Thanks.
Have you been around ten children?
Mother, teacher, yeah. Sarah, I had a just a question. First of all, I thank you for your patience tonight and thank you also for providing more childcare. It's essential. We don't have enough of it. You aren't recognized enough for the work you do, teachers, childcare providers.
Well, just start right now.
Exactly. And there's a big demand.
Trying to get going.
There's a big demand. And my question about that is, is that eight A M limitation? Really? I mean, that's not gonna be a problem for your business. I mean, I know I like to drop my kids off as early as possible. Oftentimes. You know, drop offs are seven, seven thirty. But is that realistic?
I mean, in my head, I was only operating from eight thirty to five. And the planning commission was like, let's extend that in case you do have some other cases or people are late. And they also, I'm only planning to operate Monday through Thursday because I'm one owner. I want an administrative day. I wanna be available to my three children. And they were like, let's extend it to Friday in case that changes. So. We did put some of that in place. If anything. If I wanted to tweak anything, it would be to say, can we just make it to twelve, just in case someday that changes? I feel like the capacity is more likely. To be the thing that I would want to have.
Rather than a seven, seven thirty?
Yeah.
Okay, cuz I just don't wanna.
I haven't had any parents say anything about the hours.
All right, just me. All right.
That's why. But what you don't want is complaints when they drop them off at seven fifty.
That's my concern for you.
You'll get you that could happen.
And that's why I'm wondering about, you know, you know, seven, seven thirty, if the township doesn't have any. Concerns for that, if you wanna open at eight, you wanna be able to, I I don't wanna, I just am looking ahead, make sure you don't have problems down the road.
For children coming, my employee might be there or something.
Did the planning commission have any concerns or planner?
No, we we wanted broader than she wanted it for those same concerns that you're expressing right now.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So I mean, if there's no no objection, could we could we change it to, you know, seven A M to six P M? Doug, any concerns about that? My colleagues?
No, I have no concerns.
Just as an outer limit? Just so you don't run into complaints down the road.
It'll be her choice ultimately.
Absolutely.
I don't have to agree at that time. I just could if I wanted to.
What about the what about the number of children?
Yeah, why did why did we cap it at ten, Doug, instead of twelve?
That's what she wanted.
Yeah, I think it was, I think that was her request.
I did, I came with that.
You can revise your question.
Since later said, like, do you really wanna relook at this and think about it? And I was like, you're right, it's good to just have that be a possibility in the future.
Yeah, cuz these are the outer limits. It doesn't necessarily mean what you choose you wanna do for your business.
So what? Shall we bump it up to twelve? I I don't care that I wasn't.
Employees per there has to, there's a certain number of kids and then.
Six to one ratio is what the state requires.
Six to one, okay.
So if I had only six children, which I mean, I personally think is crazy, like with four children, I would want additional help, but the state allows me to have. Six children by myself, two of which can be under eighteen months. It's pretty crazy. Yeah. So for twelve children, I'd need myself and one other person by the state law.
Okay, up to, okay, that makes sense. And then the after that would be?
Well, they don't allow anything above twelve in a home setting. If you wanted to go above twelve, you'd need a commercial like center. Yeah.
Yeah, that makes sense. How far away are your neighbors?
So I have two neighbors. I don't have the site plan with me because I actually wasn't told that I needed to present anything. I didn't really know about the meeting, but. We've got like a driveway here and their driveway runs parallel when it gets near my house. So there's two neighbors here who are actually at the planning commission meeting and both were very supportive. And then there's one way up at the road who's nowhere near us. And then there's a whole. Morning Star Way is a separate road that has houses, it's like a cul-de-sac. I I mean, I'm not the best estimator, but I'm guessing we're at least an acre away from each other. We're pretty far.
Now that you've mentioned that the road cul-de-sac is one that I I know where that is. Yeah. Okay, that's that's good. I was just concerned about, you know, how you're very close.
There's a picture, there's a picture in the materials.
Yeah, but to, you know, pictures are different than actually being there.
It's.
Yeah.
I would move the model motion with the exception of the limit be up to twelve children and that the hours be Monday through Friday, seven A M to six P M.
Support.
Moved by Riser, support by Flintoff. Is there any further discussions?
That sounds wonderful. Thank you.
A surprise for waiting, I guess. All right, then all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion passes. Those opposed, motion passes.
Great, thank you so much.
There's nothing better than being out in your own yard and listening to kids in the neighborhood.
That's right.
All right, well, that brings us, yes, that brings, brings us to the item that was added to the agenda. This is item K zero. Um, and this is the discussion. This is the discussion of, um, the, um. Post electronic bill payments plan. Um, and, um, so at this point, I'd like to draw everyone's attention to the treasurer's report, which is what I was trying to do. When this first came up under reports and point out that there is a modified version of that that has two additional questions addressed. That, um, distributed, distributed in hard copy and hopefully we can add that to the packet, so it's part of the.
Where, where are the two new ones?
At the very end, it's just they're added. So there's now a question about, um, what happens. When it's property changes hands, um, in terms of, uh, an established ECH payment plan. Um, and, um. Um, there's another question about, uh, the use of BSNA, which came up. I think that was actually addressed in part in another question and answer, but now it's addressed more explicitly.
Yeah, I know, I'm, I'm reading. Donna, were you gonna say anything more?
Do you wanna, you said something about the amount you were talking about earlier. How many, how, how much you've had come in, oh, in the last?
Oh, in the last two days. We have collected, I gotta find my notes. Um, and I was shocked when I found out it was that much. We've collected just under one million four. We've put that much cash money in the bank. It's not all tax.
I thought that was a different figure that you had.
We collect with around sixty million a year. The responsibility of, you know, recording properly. Those are just some side notes.
Okay, all right, sorry, I misunderstood. Is there anything else you wanted to add? I was sort of speaking for you about your questions and answers.
No, because everything is right there. These are all the questions and they've been addressed. You know, they have been asked or comments that are made by different people.
Okay, so I wanted to add this so we could talk as a group. And I, I'll start, but I know Mark has will add to what I'm saying. We all learned about this, five of us learned about this last week. The four trustees didn't know anything about it, Jessica didn't know anything about it. Yes, there had been general discussions about the idea. Of having electronic funds transfer op- options, but no specific plan had been proposed. Like what we saw described in this insert. The idea was good, but the implement, implementation was flawed. And I said that to you when we met on Thursday. Um, this yellow insert should have been signed by you. Instead, we see township of SIO at the top as if the whole board was involved in this. And five board members were not involved.
But it wasn't ever meant to be that way. It was just an information, this is what we're looking at. Proposing, doing. And it was only information, it wasn't saying boom, boom, boom. Not until we, like we've been doing, you know, finding out the best way to go forward.
Well, so I'm, I have some concerns. Um, the way this was done, you, the implication is that the whole township board. Was in approval or a, a majority of the board was in approval of this process, and that's not the case.
It was never meant, and I disagree with you. You may feel that way, but no, I don't. I don't think anyone else does. It's an, it was an informational card to let people know. This is what we hope to do, another option for paying your taxes. That's all that was.
Okay, so this insert outlines a manual process to set up auto pay for individual taxpayers. We're getting concerns that the process is flawed. It has risks associated with it. In terms of sharing data and. Storage of banking and financial information here at the township. So I wanted to mention, and I know this has been discussed. MCL one two four point three oh three requires that the governing body of a local unit. Must have adopted a resolution authorizing electronic transactions. And the treasurer must present a written ACH policy to the governing board.
I'm sorry, I wasn't aware of that, believe me. I, I was not aware of having to do that. I've done other things over the years. Never ever had a question, didn't realize it was going to be an issue.
And, and if I could chime in on, on that, cuz, cuz I will say, we. Um, that is absolutely a step this board needs to take. And we need to have our township attorney and treasurer work together to put an ACH policy together very quickly. I mean, I, I will say that, you know, the township has been using. Electronic funds, it was first point and pay, I, I think Donna, and then moved.
Then invoice cloud?
Yep, moved to invoice cloud in twenty nineteen. Um, I will say it is certainly Donna's statutory right. No, 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 but, but.
It's fine, but I just, but I would like to finish before.
I, I just wanna give, give one, one bit of perspective is that we need that policy in place, but we need it. We needed it, you know, seven years ago, eight years ago, nine years ago, ten years ago. We haven't had that policy. We need to put it in place. We haven't had it, and this is illuminating.
Why, why don't we let trustee Noel finish and then we'll other, we have other turns.
Okay, okay. So my point is, none of these. Statutory requirements occurred here, so that has to happen. If we had this meeting on Thursday, you said that you were going to have a meeting. With Bank of Ann Arbor on this issue with Chris, and you were going to report to the board. On what they said to you, I thought that you were gonna report in a memo. Um, Joyce asked you to do a memo and you said you would. And you said you were going to report on the policies at Pittsfield Township. You were gonna talk to them too. None of that is in what you gave us.
Been have time. I did talk with the bank, Chris talked with the bank, no issue. We've got ACH. We've had it for a long time. And all of our different funds, that's the way we, uh, we upload our accounts payable. It's, it's the same thing. It's an uploading to the bank.
Okay.
The process is already there, has been there for years.
Well, that's ACH paying out. There is a specific statute, um, different, I think, that, that you cited. That requires for any electronic payments received such as taxes, utility bills.
And the bank said we have that.
So the, and it's a different statutory requirement on that, Donna, is the only clarification.
Okay, Kathy, I just wanna add quickly, I was at the meeting that you're describing, right? Is that what you're referring to, the meeting where the discussion?
Yes.
I don't remember it being that clear that Donna was going to do a memo versus a report.
Asked her to do a memo.
Well, but I know, but the conversation was kind of free flowing. I don't think, I mean, the way that you're describing it, it sounds like there was like. Like a, almost like a signed agreement of exactly what was going.
I didn't say there was a sign.
No, I know.
But I recall Joyce saying, Joyce suggesting or asking Donna. To write a memo to the board describing what happened.
To provide an update on what's staying in place, yeah.
And that isn't in these frequently asked questions? I mean, why would you have frequently asked questions on a problematic occurrence? I mean, it just, I, I, I don't know why you would do it that way. We wanna, I wanted a memo at least. I wanted to hear an explanation from you.
It's not frequently asked questions, it's as.
Now it's questions and answers, but I mean, that's not a memo. That's my point.
In the time and the way that public just really started in, we have over fifty applications. I'm sorry, I didn't get a memo out and I don't work my job twenty-four seven.
I understand, but the, uh, we were all getting emails from residents. Expressing concerns about this process.
We didn't know how to answer.
And, you know, we all had to do our individual investigations to find out.
Both of us doing it.
Here's, here's what I think should have happened, and we did talk about this on Thursday. That everything needed to be frozen. And we shouldn't have continued to take in the forms with data from.
They're coming to the counter.
Well, it was supposed to be frozen on Thursday.
Well, I did mention that I was putting a hole, but we're letting them fill them out, we're keeping them secure.
How are they secure?
In a safe?
No, not in the safe.
Or in a locked room.
But they're in, yes.
Okay, so a locker room is, okay, I, I will now jump in here. And, and I'm, I'm gonna be, I'm, I'm just gonna be a little blunt here. To say that we have security. Donna, I do this for a living, and I, and, and first of all, you know, I love what you do and I respect what you do, but the security. And, and I, I know it was all good intentions, I wanna, I wanna be clear, but the world has changed a lot. And this level of sophistication by which bad actors gather information and can interlaten access accounts is freaking amazing. I mean, I see, I do it for a living, I see it all the time, or I help customers to realize that. I'll give you one example, a bank that we all know, regional bank, thought they were well protected. We went in there and found eleven hundred thirty-two passwords. And their security accounts. This is the kind of stuff we see all day long. So I'll go through them one by one. By mail, the post office themselves has put, posted a warning, don't send us checks in the mail anymore, don't do it. Right? So by sending a form in the mail, you are in effect sending a, a check in the mail. Some of the, the mail, uh, post office itself says those.
They have to come into the counter.
It said on your, on your thing, it said by mail.
It did, but because of what came out, we, we said no.
All right, Donna, let me just, just go through them point by point by point, right? By emails, we all know, just, but emails can get intercepted, there's a million ways that could happen. Bad, bad, bad idea. Uh, handed to, to, to somebody at, at the front desk. Is there a chain of custody? Is there a secure area that's monitored twenty-four seven by a, uh, that has access controls, that monitors that access? That is, has video cameras? The answer is no to all that. So to say that we have this data protected. It, it, it's, it's, it's crazy and it's, it's dangerous because somebody gets access to that data, they can start building a portfolio from a customer. And access their, eventually access their, their account if they're really good. I had a friend of mine who lost one point. Retired woman, single, lost one point six million dollars, her entire life savings. I've seen these things happen time and again. I had my, I had somebody file for unemployment on my own social security number. Luckily, you know, my company, so I get to see the unemployment form they applied for, right with my own name on it. That was pretty interesting. We had a check that we, by the way, dropped off to a Microsoft check to Microsoft, who dropped off at the post office in the counter. So didn't really, we dropped it off at the, you know, through the little mail slot, two person at the counter, check got forged. And luckily, we, we caught it for ninety thousand dollars. So I've seen all these instances happen all the time. We have to be so diligent and protect residential data. One slip, we are gonna look like a bunch of knuckleheads, right? Then what could happen? The potential, it's more than just that seven thousand dollars and that five thousand dollars. It's what they can do with that, that, that data. And I'm gonna take that further, all the data that's sitting in the basement with any kind of personal information. Personally identifiable information, that's a name, that's address, social security number, that's a birthday, all that is considered. And I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna talk to you about a variety of years, you're from Silicon Valley, so at least I know someone can run with me on this one.
I'm from Chelsea, Michigan, but that's okay.
So Donna, that, that, the level of what things are today are so much different than what we were even ten years ago, or let alone thirty years ago. So to say, well, this township does it that way, I'm gonna argue what they're doing is dangerous. It, it just takes one bad actor and this, this can get out of hand and.
I think, oh, I'm sorry.
I guess I need to know how you do it because everybody's doing, I shouldn't say.
So I, I, I will leave him with this, we're not gonna solve this problem tonight. I'm not suggesting we solve this right now. I gave you a, a, a solution methodology I would apply. Let's go find some, let's do a bunch of analysis, right? But there are companies that do do this, by the way, that will take payments, we can't even touch and access their data.
That's what we have right now with invoice cloud.
Yes, so that's.
We're, we're using that company.
Okay, trustee.
Okay, yeah, and this is, this is, was my point earlier about us having meetings and so we can discuss our ideas. So, you know, because we may have a great idea and Mark, like this was a great idea and then Mark could say, oh, wait a minute, this is what we need to do. Anyway, and, and again, we're in support of all of this, um, ACH. But I do have a question, what I'm confused about is in BSNA, and I don't, uh, my escrow is paid for through my, my mortgage. Or whatever that's called, but, um, I could pay my utilities, I, I like to come in and pay and so I can talk to the ladies here. But, um, I did go into BSNA and followed the links and it did take me to where I could pay by check. Put in my bank and routing, and if I sign up, if I register, then it keeps all of that. And, you know, invoice cloud does have a way for automatic pay.
BSNA does not accept, and that sounds like an ACH type. And we checked with them and they said, no.
Well, that's what I wanted to add, you know, where, where is this? And if it's like, if we're doing this manually, who is uploading and where is it being uploaded? That's what I was.
We should shove this all back to the customer to a secured site and they do it. Why are we even involved?
Where, who is manually, when, where are they uploading this information? To what software program?
In the, in my area, we're entering the data.
And into what?
In BSNA has. What do you wanna say? You enter it in there, but, and they will not take that data from citizens. They will only take.
Well, I, I could include.
There's a way to do a batch up. I guarantee there's a way to do a batch up. Again, I don't wanna try and solve the problem right now. Not enough, enough to solve the problem. Let's go do some analysis. We don't.
No, no, I'm not saying that, but I'm confused because when I went into BSNA, I couldn't include all of this information.
Let's, let's, let's.
A different.
Right now, we freeze, analyze, figure out what the best way, I understand you didn't know these things, that's okay. Hey, we all learned something today, right? Uh, this is not your field of, you know, why would you know? But it's, it's a nasty world out there. And believe me, I'm not even an expert either. The experts are, are who I work with in, in, in my company, so. And others. So let's, I, I strongly encourage, we freeze this for right now, let's figure this out, do some analysis. Figure out what the best approach is that solves your statutory duties, whatever statutory duties may, may be applicable to adjust. And then implement. And if this, again, we waited ten years, if it's ten years and sixty days or ten years and ninety days, that's okay. I don't think there's anything wrong.
We do have invoice cloud right now. It is not ideal, and I agree with Donna. Like ideally, we would have something free for the customers and things that would meet all the goals. I, I think Donna, my, my biggest concern with this is that we've, it, it's, it's. Are requesting this kind of information from residents, to my knowledge, is something we've never done before as a township.
We've never had a reason to.
Mm-hmm, and, and so that this is what concerns me so much is, is requesting this PII. And that we're still collecting them. I think we need to stop collecting them. Because I think also it's a, aside from the unsecured data. This kind of by accepting it, it makes a promise, even the authorizations, I don't know that. This is, I mean, it's saying on today's date, I authorize, I've gotta allow at least thirty days. This sets expectations. The yellow flyer said this will be in place by August. That's not gonna happen. And so to manage expectations and, and to get this right, I really recommend we freeze taking these. We no longer accept these and we just say, hey, whoops. we no longer accept these, and we just say, hey, whoops, program's on hold, you know, indefinitely, we'll figure it out, maybe it's ninety days, maybe it's not temporarily, but, but I really think it's, I, I'm very uncomfortable with the township taking in this information from people.
Let me add one more thing, and then I'll, 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 we'll start the floor. So, I, I'm always a big believer in never letting crisis go to waste. So, so, and what I mean by that is, when you have a challenge, what can I, what can I make out of this challenge, I think this is a good thing. This is our chance, in my mind, it kinda hit me today after workout was, why don't we maybe look at this as a way to really just take silence to the twenty-first century and become a leader in all, in, in security, right? That we not only secure the way we manage money, we secure the way we secure all your documents downstairs, whatever, whatever makes sense. It wouldn't be that hard, because we're not that big yet, so this would be a fairly quick thing to manage, where we become the model. Everybody gets envious of us, and, hey, Dexter comes over here in Pittsburgh, goes, wow, what are you guys doing, this is, you know, cool. We're on the cover of whatever that township magazine is, you know.
Township associates.
Yeah, it, it wouldn't be that different.
They have an award program.
Yeah, I'd, I'd be, I'd be happy to help, and be, somebody would need to lead it. Somebody would need to lead that effort here, you know, internally, so I, I would suggest Jessica, because she's probably the most tech savvy of, of, knowing the team. I don't mean to be, to bring down anybody, but I'm just guessing from what I know. I'll be happy to assist and help out any way I can. I think it's a great opportunity for us to be, come out ahead, so we may have to go a little backwards, to go backwards, one foot, step backwards, we can go five steps forward, and I don't think it'll take us that long. If we're all willing to do it with an open mind, and an ego, and, 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 not an ego, but a, a, eager to, to, to get to this goal. I don't think it's gonna be hard, hard to accomplish, there's tons of technology out there, that's out of the box, proven, that can accomplish all these goals.
Trustee Rizer. So you, a couple of people have said freeze, and I don't know what that means literally.
Yeah, I was gonna comment more on that.
Does that mean, like, I'm looking at the yellow, and it says, you can email them, or you can drop them off, so if someone drops them off, do we take them, do we not take them? I'm gonna defer to others on this, so, so, I, let, let's get some definition of what we're going to do, not what we're going, what, if we get something to email, what do we do with that? If we get somebody walk in, what do we do with that? And maybe.
If you look on page two of the questions and answers, it says what the treasurer is stopped.
This went out, this went out to people, so, there might be people who didn't look at this right away, and they might still look at it. So it's possible we could get an email, or maybe I'm wrong on that.
Well, we just got somebody tonight who handed a form to Donna, they've been coming in all day.
So.
Physical forms, physically.
So, I'm gonna, so how do we, how do we implement a, a, a system of doing this?
Freeze, freeze.
Well, so.
I actually had drafted a model motion, and that's where I was going ten or fifteen minutes ago. Before I got interrupted.
Oh, sorry, I, I, I thought you were, I'm sorry, I thought you were.
No.
I'm sorry.
No.
I'm sorry. Look, I, can we hear from our township manager?
I might be able to answer some of his questions, but yes, we can hear from our township manager.
Your hand sort of being raised, I wanted to call you.
So, I guess, just a couple of things. One is related to the electronic payment that the treasurer's working on, and what happens with that? Are we looking at discontinuing that process altogether at this point in time? So I want, I want to get some clarity on that. And then, secondly, I think if, you know, if we're really talking about doing something comprehensive, you know, we have an IT director, and that person, I think, should be involved and lead the charge in that regard. And then I think, secondly, if, you know, if, if you wanna, if you wanna do something comprehensive, we may want to get a neutral party involved to handle and oversee that process, so that's just my thought on that.
Absolutely, and along with the finance department and utility billing departments as well, we're impacted.
Yeah, I do totally agree, IT has to be engaged, right? The whole idea, whatever training happens, is eventually turn over IT to manage, and/or just somebody internally to coordinate all the.
And the policies, Joyce understands the policy that has happened with ACH, we also need a policy on PII.
Okay, I'd like to turn back to trustee Noel, who was, was on the verge of making a motion.
Okay, so, this motion is a suggestion, and it can be modified. It covers three issues, covers communication with the residents, it covers stopping the acceptance of the authorizations for direct deposit, and it cut, it covers the fact that the plan is on hold indefinitely, so let me read it.
Can we take that for real?
We can, this can be modified.
Let's hear her motion.
Okay. To ask the treasurer to, number one, send written communication to all CIO taxpayers apologizing for the message in the yellow insert regarding electronic funds transfer included with the summer twenty-twenty-three tax bills. And that such a new program is on hold, I have indefinitely, I'm fine with temporarily. Number two, stop accepting the authorizations for direct payment forms. Number three, contact each resident who has already submitted such authorization to tell them that the plan is on hold indefinitely, and that the treasurer has securely destroyed, parentheses, shredded or deleted, end of parentheses, the submitted authorization, I have copies for everybody, I'm gonna pass them out. It just, it operationalizes some of what we're talking about, and we wanna make changes, and I'm open to changes. But I feel like we're asked, we're asking, I'm not telling you, we're asking you to do these things. And we recognize that it's in your purview.
Well, first of all, I disagree with writing a letter to everybody in the township. But we've already talked about ways to, either you've mentioned destroy, I have no problem letting those people know that it's on hold. We've chosen to destroy your information until we move forth.
We're going to have to communicate with the residents who have submitted the forms.
That's what I just said.
Okay, but you're gonna have to do that in writing, you can't just tell them.
I understand.
Okay.
Oh, no, 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 I, no, I would not call them up, I had a telephone, oh, no, no, it would be in writing.
And what about stopping, like, to stop collecting these?
Maybe tell them when they come into the counter, because they're coming in, that we aren't accepting anymore at this point until we gather more information or whatever.
It is not, program is not currently active. It is not active, it is not, something that's clear, because I think in the last few days, what, what I've noticed, and, and seeing, you know, collecting these at the front counter, you know, that it's, you know, like the resident who came here tonight, right? She's like, thank you so much, this is super. And, and it is super, but also, what, what is, I, I think we could help our residents know that this is not in place, right now there is Invoice Cloud, if you would like to use it. And, and when I look at the, the Q and A, this reads as though that option doesn't exist, when it has for several years.
Questions about what we were doing that we.
I know, but, but it, and, and so I would just say what's, what seems important, and I, is, is to really just stop accepting these, you know, and to even know, you know, I don't know how many have been emailed, I don't know how many have been sent in, I don't know what methods they've come in, and I know that tax collection season's about to get really busy, right? So we're about to have a bunch of people coming in.
We need to put something very clear and detailed up on the website.
What about, you know, up at the, I'm sorry, up at the front, having a, like a, a printout saying that this is on hold for now, we're working, working through the steps in order, or something like that?
This is an old saying, just, everything's just mirrored, just, must be very consistent with that message, just, somebody needs to draft that, and has somebody needs to review it, so who wants to, who wants to draft that message?
I will.
Okay.
And I will not just put a sign on the counter, I will ask it to be called, to come out and talk first.
That's even better, that's even awesome, personal, personal service there, I love that.
And, and I think that Kathy, your, your message is that, to, to ask Donna to convey these things, however, Donna, you wish to, the, to stop, but, but also that we actually stop accepting the authorizations. I know we stopped handing these out, but, you know, we're still accepting them.
That's what I'm talking about, Jessica, let me do it, let me go through and, until we can answer all the questions.
Okay, so here's what I'm gonna, Donna's gonna plan, she's gonna work on the stuff, let her, Donna do her thing, man, let's.
And I'll keep the board updated.
Yeah, give her respect, let's give her the chance to craft the memo that you requested, the plan for how we're gonna manage the front, what, if somebody does come in with a, with a, with a, with a form, and go from there.
Well, I was just gonna make one suggestion, to help move this forward, because one of the things that we've learned in the last few days is that there's a step that we missed, or that the township, I guess, missed at whenever it started accepting ACH payments of any kind, and that is adopting a policy.
That we have to do.
Right, so I was gonna suggest that one of the things you add to your to-do list is to talk with the township attorney about what that policy would look like.
We've got three examples.
And, and sort of work, work, work with the township attorney on, on bringing something back that we, that the board could consider.
I, I think that's absolutely right, Will, but I will just underscore that, you know, let's say this, this program doesn't exist, we still need that policy yesterday, right, for our invoice cloud. So, so, you know, and, and, and the resolution would be fairly simple for the board to authorize the use of something like Invoice Cloud. But in there are certain requirements that might take a little bit of time, so what I would ask to get us into compliance quickly, is that we first prioritize getting a resolution in place that authorize, properly authorizes our current program of Invoice Cloud, because that is quicker and simpler. And then as a second step, looking at, at this one, but.
July twenty-five?
I would say, I, I mean, I would wanna see on July twenty-fifth at least a, a resolution authorizing properly what we're currently doing, okay, with Invoice Cloud.
So, so.
Or, or a new policy if they're, if we can get it done by then?
Well, let's let, let's let Donna do, do her job as treasurer and to work with the township attorney, and see what, see what makes the most sense. It seems like we're starting to get into micro managing.
Well, no, it's not micro, I think there's the, we've been out of compliance for years, it's come to our attention, here we are, let's quickly fix that. That's step one.
Well, it could be that that's step one, and step two could be combined.
That's not realistic, but possible.
Again, micromanaging, so let's, let's let Donna move forward with her list of things to do to sort of address this. I think, actually, trustee Noel, that was a very thoughtful motion that you were offering to try and sort of enumerate all of, all of the,
I mean, I.
The, the different elements of what could be done.
I think I would, I would support your motion, Kathy, with some modifications, because I do think it's important, given, you know, this went out to every taxpayer, given everything, that, that the board at least, you know, makes some record of, of what, what we're asking, and I know, Donna, that, you know, not, not to micromanage, but I do think that, that we should support, so I will support it.
So it's moved by Noel, support by Flintoff, is there discussion of the motion?
What modifications would you suggest, Jessica?
Well, it sounds like, Donna, can we, it sounds like Donna, we, we kind of started addressing these in opposite order, but Donna, would you be so kind to look at number three? That one seemed, um, to you?
That would have to do that.
Yeah.
Now, I have no problem with that.
Okay.
That was going through my mind too, as, as our discussion.
Totally, so to hold, and we can put, instead of indefinitely, we can put temporarily, that's better, Mark?
Yeah, rather than saying apologize, I want to just say that we're just.
I'm just on number, I'm just on number three, I'm just on number three.
Yeah, I got it, okay, yeah.
I'm not apologizing for it.
Right, I know.
We're working backwards, I'll start with the low hanging fruit at the end there, okay, number two, stop accepting the authorizations for direct payment forms.
Yep.
Is that acceptable to you, Donna?
I just said I would handle it.
I thought we already dealt with this, I don't understand why we're proceeding with the motion.
Well, I'm, I'm.
We're going with the motion, yeah.
And then it sounds like, step, the, the first one is the written communication to all CIO taxpayers.
Period, yeah.
No written communication, but it must be on the website.
So, so, so. So you would wanna delete, number one, post a, post community, written communication on the CIO website.
You can save it that way.
Okay, a written communication.
And if, if a resident comes into and asks for a form.
We will tell them that we, the program's on hold and we're not accepting them right now.
Okay.
When it's either verbally or.
Verbally.
Verbally.
I will talk to them face to face.
Okay. May I, may I read this?
Yes.
As, as amended and see how it sounds, everybody? A motion by Noel, support by Flintoff, to ask the treasurer to post a written communication on the CIO website regarding the message in the yellow insert about electronic funds included with the summer twenty-twenty-three tax bill, and that such a new program is on hold temporarily. Two, to stop accepting the authorization forms, and three, to contact each resident who has already submitted such authorization to tell them that the plan is on hold temporarily, and that she has securely destroyed, shredded or deleted, the submitted authorization.
Is the sidebar, and Donna, maybe we should craft that one, rather than everybody involved, you just write one, you spin it by, run everything by Joyce, you two, you and Joyce just work together, whatever you two work out, I'm gonna, I'm gonna thumbs it up, okay? You don't need, we don't need twenty-five people involved in this.
No.
Mean the, mean the language of the message?
Yeah, yeah.
It's the treasurer's message.
Yeah, yeah, the term is.
I always have somebody else to, you know.
Is that, do you go into the motion, or it's just?
Nope, no.
Okay, so, unless there's further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Wait.
I'm opposed.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
It carries.
Roll, roll call vote?
Sure.
Okay. Noel?
Yes.
Rizer?
Yeah.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
No.
Flintoff? Yes. Brazil?
Yeah.
Carrie?
Yes.
All right, motion passes, six one.
All right, that concludes our business, and brings us to public comment. This is the time for members of the public to speak for up to three minutes on any matter under the purview of the Board of Trustees.
Yep, I got it.
Oh, I didn't realize that we must, Kristi.
No, no, I'm, I got it, just. It's just like a, like a little.
Riding a bike.
All right, first up is Pam Boyd, followed by Jonathan Greenberg, Pam?
Pam Boyd, a CIO resident, oh my goodness. Trustee Noel, thank you for what you brought with this last issue. I, I disagree with how you have done it a little bit. The board needs to put out an apology, because as I said in my letter to the board, that this came as if it was coming from the entire board, not necessarily from the treasurer. If you, you have six thou, over six thousand residents were given this information. If you give an, if you extend goodwill and you apologize, you will get back residents who are more willing to wait until a better policy is, is in effect. I think you guys are missing some of the issues, and Treasurer Palmer, I'm so sorry that, that you couldn't understand that you made a mistake, and you aren't willing to accept that you've made a mistake, and I think it's poor, poorly done on your part, thank you.
Okay, next up is Jonathan, followed by Joe Pattinson, and I just wanted to acknowledge, we're doing online, public first, and then in person. Jonathan.
You know, that was actually one of my suggestions earlier that I, I lost in my notes, like every time, maybe, let the, let the. Like every, maybe, uh, let the, let the, um, those of us with social anxieties go first.
I thought he was gonna say something else. Anything else, Jonathan?
Yeah, no, I was just letting Jillian appreciate where I was go, okay, so, um, uh, Donna, um, again, with all due respect, it would have been nice to see you acknowledge making a mistake here in trusting, I guess, Sandy to put this program together. The, the, um, the, uh, problem that I wanted to raise, and again, uh, trustee Noel, thank you for bringing this, uh, discussion to the table and, and being prepared with some, uh, language. Uh, the problem that you all still have is that until a letter is mailed out to all of the residents, that, you know, sending something out, an announcement or something like that, requesting an email communication with banking information, until that is corrected in a mailing, it remains something that can be misconstrued by a resident. And every time they send in their information through an email, we are at risk. So saying on the website, we are no longer taking this information isn't enough. We need to, we need to mail, and, and I'll, I'll defer to other experts in the room. But we need to mail residents, um, a, uh, uh, communication saying that this program is not being continued or whatever the language is. Also, uh, earlier in our discussion, and I'm glad they found those checks. That's quite a relief. I think somebody said it was 800,000. I don't think it was that much, but.
No.
No, I mean, somebody in earlier made, made mention of that. And I know it wasn't, it was much less than that, but, um, well, yeah, I know, and it's 125 for the record, but if there was an answer given to when was the, um, when were the checks finally located? That length of time they were missing, um, would give me pause about my bank. So I'm glad that it wasn't your responsibility and I'm glad that SIO didn't mess up and it was the banks. But any bank that misplaces $125,000 worth of checks for, what, a year? Uh, and why are we banking with them? I would question that relationship. All right, thanks, everyone. Have a good night.
Thank you, Jonathan. Next up is Joe, possibly Rob Pattinson.
This is Joe Pattinson. Rob Pattinson, SIO Township idiot.
That's where he gets his deep voice from.
So, uh, first for Mark, uh, what is the best way to delete and ensure that the emails are destroyed? As the electronic copy, we can shred the paper, but how do we take care of the electronic copies?
And all the archives.
Yeah, so that's good.
Okay, that answers that question. That's wonderful. You absolutely have to shred the paper applications you have now. And I would suggest filming it so that you can show that you have indeed destroyed that, um, and have a record of destroying those papers. Donna, you, you've been extremely defensive today and it's understandable. But this was a massive mistake and you have to hold up this initial proposal and start from scratch. And you have an expert sitting right next to you who is clearly willing to help and has, and you have had a lot of help and support off, offered to you. I won't say it.
Sorry, Rob, these guys here.
But you've had a lot of help, uh, and support tonight offered to you. And I highly recommend you, you take it up. This was a massive mistake and you're gonna need help fixing it. So please take them up on that help. And you abs, uh, mass mailing to, you mailed out 6,900 of the yellow slips. You absolutely.
No, 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 timeout. It only went to taxpayers who do not have escrow accounts to pay their taxes. So that's. 2,900 or so.
So 4,000.
Yeah, so it's still a chunk.
That's good.
Yeah.
You absolutely have to mail that to them because they're not watching this online. They're not, uh, on the internet. You absolutely have, because this was a mailing to them, you have to mail the fix to them as well. And then on another note, boy, does Gelman have magic or what? For 40 years, they have avoided responsibility for cleaning up that mess. And what they did in this consent, uh, this, uh, court of appeals thing is they basically took the interveners out of the, the, uh, the lawsuit. And that was, they are abso, Gelman is absolutely brilliant at avoiding responsibility and all the more reason they need to pay. And let me finish, please. SIO Township owns the conditional, um, approval of the Heritage Woods, document that David Spicer and Eugene Kett were talking about earlier tonight. Uh, number eight on the document that SIO Township wrote is that there will be, negotiations in, in good faith. And if one of those parties does not negotiate in good faith, then they have failed, especially if it's the developer. And if they haven't failed to negotiate at all, let alone in, in good faith, then they have failed that condition that is the SIO Township document. Therefore, SIO Township owns that and it is SIO Township's responsibility, as much will I understand, as you don't want that. But that is collectively and individually the responsibility of this board of trustees because all of you agreed to it and it's part of the document that you have all basically signed. And that's it. Thank you for giving me extra time.
Thank you, Rob. Uh, there's nobody else on Zoom in person, public?
Thank you, everybody. Uh, one quick thing, I promise I'm not gonna bring up anything about the yellow form.
Um.
Actually, we brought up something earlier that kinda goes back to, uh, that Saturday meeting we had last December. Trustee Brazil, remember that? How we actually tried to get together some things at communication? We tried to come up with some sort of planning of all the things we wanna do. What are our goals?
Did you plan?
Yeah, you know, yeah, yeah. It was, it was a really good intent, you know, we were here for, God, what, four or five hours?
You got us pizza.
Yeah, I remember that.
Thank you.
But, but Joyce, to give you an idea, we did try to do this in the past. It would be great if we could do it again. And maybe we set, you know, more of a confined timeline out of two or three hours. And, you know, everybody can come to the meeting with their top three things. And we come together and do range choice voting where we try and work our way down the list, you know, we have so much that we need to do. We have to work on Gelman. We have to work on our planning. We have to work on our budget. We have to work on a capital improvement plan. We have to work on how we're gonna handle this, that, and the other thing. All these things need to be done, but we need to figure out what our priority list and start working on something or they're all gonna still need to be done four years from now.
Delegation, responsibility, authority. You give somebody all three of those things and they go. And pizza.
There you go. Uh, so that, that would be my big, uh, I guess, ask of you guys over the next couple of months is figure out a time that makes sense for everybody to sit down and have at least one of these. If, if one goes well, maybe we have another one a couple of months later. Just would help everybody, I think, get more done, not off their plates. That way you can, that happens to fill back up that lovely thing that happens in life. And clerk Flintoff, the only other thing I was gonna ask you is how's, how's the audit going? I know they were out here a couple of weeks ago, so I figured they're working on finalizing our report, so. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Quick, quick response. The auditors are still working through the open items list. The staff are doing an awesome job. We're on track. The auditors have not yet submitted their formal communications to the board, but they will at some point and, and get, uh, uh, on a report schedule, but we're a ways off yet.
Wes, I gotta like say to the board, like, you know, I don't know if you noticed, but I tried to do a different thing today. When, when a resident's coming and has a question, I hated just standing here, listening to them and not responding. It just didn't make sense to me. So I said, why don't we just, they got a question, why don't we just answer the question? Can we continue that format?
Yeah.
I mean.
Whatever we decide.
Whatever the board decides it wants to do, we can do. I just caution against getting into a back and forth during public comments.
You're right. If it gets long, Will, if it gets out of hand, I think you're absolutely right. There's gotta be a a limit, but if we can answer a quick question and satisfy their, you know, they, they invested all the time to come here and ask the question. They at least, I think, are owed a response.
I agree.
Why don't, why don't we talk about forming up for doing that?
Okay.
Um, Kathleen, it looks like you're ready.
I wanna talk about, follow on to the discussion about, uh, the Goodrich Theater project. That whole discussion was a classic example of how the township does not do planning at all. The question about how did some of these things get, um, put on as potential uses? These things are all provided by the developer. This happens regularly. We don't plan for, another good example, uh, at the corner of Liberty and Wagner. That gentleman had a piece of property that zoned office. Zoned approved, site plan approved. He comes back and says, oops, I can't sell office. So the planning commission says, well, of course you could change this. Your problem is our problem, which is ridiculous. I mean, I heard the discussion about, uh, what is, um, mixed use office research? So that's maybe a desirable thing. So why couldn't that have gone into that parcel? But instead, the planning commission, instead of planning, they let the developer dictate what goes on in that corner. We changed the master plan for that developer. We changed the master plan for Heritage Woods because they asked for it. We are not planning at all. And I don't know how you can, Doug Luhan can't explain how lodging got in there. I was at that meeting. I don't, uh, fully trust his response to, um, there was consensus. There was no, nothing against this. It was all whatever they wanted. It all got put in there. They, they asked for six stories. Nobody pushed back. Maybe Ken Moore pushed back. Yeah, so our, uh, planning commission is not doing their jobs. In fact, um, if a developer comes and offers a couple of EV stations, you're good to go. Your plan will be approved. So that's my observation from, for that process, having watched all their meetings for the past few years.
Thank you. Thank you, Kathleen. We have one more Zoom hand. Um, Mary Gillis, Mary?
Hi, guys. I was just wondering, uh, um, that, uh, working meeting that trustee Carrie requested had been scheduled. And, uh, um, yeah, and, and I'm also a little bit concerned about, uh, um, putting on Christie, who's working on her own this week. The, um, the need to address, uh, residents waving forms at the front desk with, um, private data on it. That's what I have today. Thanks.
And Mary, which, uh, Jillian has a question. Uh, which, which meeting are you referring to?
Jillian, didn't you ask, uh, for a, a working meeting to discuss, uh, committees and how they inter, uh, interrelate with the, um, the? I mean, you guys have been asking for a working meeting for a long time on various topics and I just thought,
Yeah.
um, maybe that was one that might get scheduled.
Yeah, thank you. I thought there, you said that we, I had scheduled something and I was like, did I? But, no, it's just, you know, this is, I keep talking or asking for us to work and have work sessions because in a regular board meeting, we already have agenda items, but we have things that need to be addressed. And also, you know, Kathleen and other people have pointed out that we are reactive with our, our plans, which is, doesn't really make the plan. But if we get on, you know, the same page and then also bring in the other, um, committee members and also look at the, not just, you know, the planning part, but the administrative part. What do we need as a township to build? So we can't do that in a regular work or in a regular board meeting. We need to have those sessions, but yes. So thank you for clarifying that, Mary. I was like, hmm.
Alicia, did you wanna make a public comment? You're the only person who hasn't.
Um, just, uh, guys were, uh,
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Yes.
Uh, support?
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion to adjourn by Brazil, supported by Carrie. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, we are adjourned. At 10:55.
Thanks, everybody. Good night.